We'll start tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Calling of role.
Randy Gentry.
Here.
Nancy Alsop.
Here.
Brenda Wilson.
Here.
David Thompson.
Here.
Brad Anderson.
Here.
Vicky Wager.
Here.
Steve Ellis.
Here.
Thank you. Correcting the general proceeding minutes if needed. Are there any? Communication from elected officials, other officials, or agencies of the county. Mr. Morris.
Councilpeople, Mike Morris, Beagle County Commissioner. I'd like to address you guys at this point in time. If you will bear with me, I'd like to go to a Christmas program for the kid at school about 5:45, and you guys might not be done by then. And I believe any other questions past what my statement will be could be answered by Commissioner Lincoln Bader, Commissioner Schweitzer. Okay, two things. One, the agreement that you guys are going to look at at the end for improvement of radio tower and equipment request. We all believe that to be very important, but not critical at this time. And there seems to be urgency. And I don't, I personally don't believe I've had time to review the information contained in the 147 pages here adequately and to be asked to allocate $10 million or $7.5 million or whatever. So you guys will probably have some questions on chronological order of presenting this. So I would not be in favor of it at this time. Again, it's important, but I don't think it's critical. Second thing is, we would certainly like you to consider our highway people with pay increase. For some reason, they didn't get the same pay increase that the other people did, and we believe that's very important. That's our people, and so that's why we're standing up and advocating for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions from council? Nope, you're good. Any other communication from elected officials? Councilman Ellis?
I would like to make a motion that, quite frankly, I don't know that anybody on the council is familiar that I was going to propose this evening. And it's my understanding that it would take a two-thirds vote. So my apologies for doing this last minute. I'd like to make a motion, with the exception of commissioners and county council persons. I'd like to make a motion to move all elected county officials to a grade 517 with a 3% cost of living adjustment.
Plus 3%, what'd you say, plus what?
Plus a 3% cost of living adjustment.
What was their pay increase, elected officials? The elected officials got 3%.
They did get 3%, so they are currently sitting at $77,878.30. And that is auditor, the treasurer, recorder, the surveyor, the assessor, clerk, and coordinator.
So in my proposal to clarify, I believe in that one, we didn't, or I did not include Harrison, is that correct? In this version, Harrison would also be included. So basically, all elected officials, other than commissioners and council people, would be the same grade of a 517. And they would continue to get their 3% cost of living adjustment.
Discussion from council?
Question, Mr. President. Mr. Ellis, can you explain to me in this motion that what you're trying to do, does this move these elected officials to midpoint, or just gives them a 3%?
Just the 3%, not to midpoint.
I think, not that my voice matters, but I would say that if elected officials, we're talking about the treasurer, the recorder, the surveyor, clerk. I think that they deserve the midpoint. I think if we're not careful, what we're going to end up doing is we're going to have employees actually passing the elected officials on the pay scale. So that would be some concern. I mean, I don't, I'm not opposed to 3%. The pay grade changes, who would be affected by the pay grade changes, Mr. Ellis?
All elected county officials, with the exception of commissioners would stay at a 518, and council would stay at a 514.
So who does this affect?
It'll be treasurer, auditor, assessor, clerk, recorder, what others are there? Harrison, surveyor.
One last question. What's the purpose of moving a pay grade if we're not going to give a midpoint? I mean, the 3% can happen without a pay grade change. What's the purpose? What are you trying to promote by that?
So throughout the year, we have heard from multiple different elected officials that in some cases, there are certain requirements of their job, and others, and then there are some other cases where there are not as many requirements, and some of these cases where they have to have extra licensing to do their job. They're not only not being compensated equally, but they're actually below. And so my thought was, rather than to have a big debate, why not just make, and quite frankly, I wholeheartedly believe that all elected officials should be the same grade. But I understand that that would cause a price, or it would cause a lower salary to commissioners, and so so as to not impact them in a negative way, and so as to not give ourselves a raise. I felt the most feasible direction to go would be to take care of all of the other elected officials and put them at the same grade. That way, when someone is running for office, they know they all make the same amount. It also helps, by doing this, it helps prevent as many of the non-elected employees from being paid close to what the elected official is, or in some cases, more.
David? Councilman Anderson?
Also in your motion at the Budget Committee, you raised the coroner's salary, which is actually been considered a part-time position. Gave them that same salary.
Correct.
I think that's not correct. I voted against that motion.
Right.
At the budget hearing, and the budgets were already set. We've already voted on the budget, pardon, the salary ordinance. And that's all coming from the general fund?
If it is, and I, you and I had a brief conversation prior to this, and so I don't know that it is possible. My humble opinion is, the coroner's office, if we are allowed to legally do this, and quite frankly, I've said the same about commissioners or anything else. I feel like an elected official should be able to elect, similar to the prosecutor, can elect at the beginning of their term, if they want to be considered part-time or full-time, and then they choose between which salary they want. And if you're going full-time, then you're expected to do your job X amount of hours per week. If you're going part-time, then that would be a different expectation. If that is legal for us to do, it would be my opinion that we need to do that. I think we have to take into consideration that some elected officials have full-time jobs and are not able to work full-time in their positions, and others are putting more time and effort into their elected positions.
Michael?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, I mean, that election that you're talking about, Councilman Ellis, with regards to the prosecutor, is created by statute.
Right.
And so I don't think that you could, I mean, I don't think anybody running for the clerk's office or the treasurer's office would be obligated to make that election at any point during the pendency of their, you know, running for office. And I don't think you could obligate them to make that after they may or may not be elected. So I mean, I think the idea of giving the person the choice as to whether or not they want to work part-time or work full-time is, that's for the electorate to vet out during the election process in, you know, deciding which candidate they want to support. I mean, if somebody's saying, well, you know, this isn't going to be my full-time job, and the other person, that's part of the equation. I mean, the idea that they would have to make that election affirmatively, I think you'd be running into, yeah, I don't think it would stand up to scrutiny.
Right, and it may not be legal for us to do. I was just suggesting, if it is legal to do, and we could create a local ordinance or a modification that allows us to legally do that, then it may not be a bad choice, because I think there are some elected officials that would rather be looked at as part-time. And there are some officials, elected officials, that would like to put more time and effort into it, because they have the time and effort, and they're going to make it a full-time position. If it's not legal to do, then we leave it as it is.
I mean, I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, Councilman, or that it, I just, I know that the only, you know, the reason that the prosecutor, you know, has that election, I think, is just, that's, it's a recognized part of the equation going, you know, into, into the election. And it, you know, maybe the legislature would decide it would be good for other people to have that same obligation. But I think that is their prerogative. They control elections, and I think we would be stepping into their domain with that sort of.
Sure.
With that sort of rule.
All right, well, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to ask Michael's opinion, too. We've already passed the salary ordinance, correct?
You have.
So we can't just make a motion to do this without amending the salary ordinance, isn't that correct?
No, I mean, you're correct. It would, yes, it is, it would be a motion to amend the 2026 salary ordinance for elected officials. And that's, yes, that's the way I understand it.
Councilman Anderson?
Michael, is that state statute on that prosecutor?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking. And what was the coroner's?
Well, I mean, the coroner is a designated part-time position. I mean, it's, I mean, the, I shouldn't say designated. It is anticipated in the statute that the possibility of a medical doctor performing the functions of a coroner, and at the same time, not shutting down their medical practice in order to perform those functions. And so the statute contemplates a scenario where a doctor's the one doing the coroner's services and also running a medical practice. And that's perfectly legal. And so the coroner has always got a different designation from the council because everybody recognized that it's not a position like the assessor, the auditor, the treasurer that, you know, is in here every day. Not to say they're not conducting their business every day, but it's a different sort of business. They are primarily obligated to sign off on death certificates and, you know, perform the other statutory functions at the coroner. They have a chief deputy, they have deputy coroners who respond to calls for service from law enforcement. And so I think it was just recognized that it was a little different type of elected position, and so it was compensated differently. And in the majority of those years, it was held by somebody with a medical license, and so the pay by statute went up and was closer to what otherwise would be an elected official's salary. Now that it's not held by a person with a medical license, you're seeing the numbers that it's always been, but otherwise, it's been, you know, held by primarily a doctor, so.
Michael, isn't it the policy, too, if they be, if coroner becomes, or the person that wins the coroner's race, was a pathologist or a doctor, their salary was very changed?
Yeah.
I mean, we went to lawsuit over that.
Yeah.
If you remember years back.
Yeah.
And if they take the salary, and as a doctor, you got to pay them one and a half times?
Correct.
So.
That's exactly right. One and a half times.
And that was one of the reasons, I think, they kept the salary where it is now, so they could have more deputies.
No, I mean, it is a position that, you know, is on call 24/7, 365. I mean, it, you know, they're always susceptible to being called out for coroner's call for law enforcement, and so it is, yeah, I.
And how many deputies do they have now? Four?
I think so.
I couldn't say.
Yeah, I think it's four. And at one time, we had reduced them to two.
Yes.
And that's when we had a doctor that was also the coroner. And we reduced them to two, and then through the years, I wasn't here on the council at that time, but they went back to four deputies. And that's when I thought the reduction in the coroner's salary was done. And I wasn't here on the council at that time, but, you know.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Wager?
In regards to the number of deputies, the caseload in coroner's offices up tremendously due to drugs and suicides. And that's been like in the last three or four years. And by statute, the coroner can be either full-time or part-time, depending on caseload. So I guess that's something we'd have to figure out.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Okay, as I understand it, too, the coroner, we are actually paying another doctor to actually do the autopsies, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, it seems rather redundant to pay a full-time physician for the coroner when he's not, all he's doing, I mean, I'm not saying all he's doing, but he's signing off on the death certificates, he's not performing autopsies, he's got chief deputies or whatever deputies that are going out and actually doing, I don't know that the coroner's position qualifies to be a 517 and a full-time position at this point.
Let me also add that the coroner has never, doctor or not, they never do the autopsy, it has to be a pathologist. And we have forensic pathologists for its number.
But we're paying them in addition to the coroner.
Which we always will, we always have to do that.
I'm going to just say right off that I don't agree that the coroner, I don't agree that anything needs to be changed. The elected officials should have their 2025 salary plus 3%, and everything else remain the same as what we already passed in the salary ordinance.
Can I make one, I just need to clarify, earlier I had mentioned a number, but it was a midpoint number. So the actual number, and it's only for the, let's see here, so the commissioners stayed at the 518 grade with a 3%. The auditor stayed at grade 517 with a 3%. At grade 516 with a 3%, it was the coroner, assessor, clerk, recorder, surveyor, treasurer. Harrison stayed at the 515 with a 3%, and council got no raise. So for the 516 grade level, it is $72,847.76.
And the 17 was 76, 77?
And for the auditor at grade 17, it's 79,768.
So everyone would move to the 517 in his scenario, in the Councilman Ellis's scenario? They would all move up?
That was, the goal was to put everybody other than commissioners and council at a 517. Also, I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion to amend this, or maybe it doesn't even get a second, I don't know, but I, but it was, I'm trying to remedy what I perceive to be an item that we have had questions on throughout the year.
And it wasn't able to be remedied during the budget?
What is your request? One more time?
All right, so what is currently on the table is, with the exception of commissioners and county council persons, I would like to make a motion to move all elected county officials to a five, a grade 517 with the 3% cost of living adjustment.
And, sorry, I've got one other question.
Councilwoman Wilson?
So that entails, how many, how many people are we talking about moving from 516 to 517?
If you include the coroner, that's six positions.
So six positions and roughly $70,000 per?
About $5,000 is the difference.
Okay, I thought it was, okay, 72,879,7?
72,847, and 79,768.
Is this a possible motion, Michael?
I'm sorry.
To move everybody to 517, well, minus the commissioners and council, to a 517 plus 3%? That is his motion?
Yes. I mean, it would be to amend the salary ordinance to reflect that, I guess.
And that gets a second? We vote on it? It doesn't need?
No.
Okay.
Let me.
Go ahead.
So the salary ordinance, the coroner was at what?
77,000.
72.
72, I'm sorry.
So your motion is to amend?
That is my motion. My apologies for springing this on every, literally, just so you all know. No one up here knew that I was going to do this. My apologies.
No, go ahead.
Kevin Gardner, county assessor. I have had some communications with Mr. Ellis. I've also spoke with Ms. Wager and a few other people. And I guess what this all stems around is, and I know everyone's tired of hearing the terms Baker-Tilly study. Everything was originally derived around the Baker-Tilly study, to put everybody in a category based on what their position was in the county. You've kind of used that to get your staffing where it is today, where you just voted on, which was the midpoint for the staffing in a previous meeting. I guess part of the stuff we're lacking is, you use the study to get your employees to that point. And elected officials were left behind because you felt, I guess we felt that elected officials make too much, I guess. But if we're looking at the study, the problem you've got now is you only have nine elected officials that are affected by this. So what you've taken is, you've taken the rest of the appointed positions, you've taken their chief deputies, their administrators, and all of that, and you've moved them to this midpoint position, which now puts them in a lot of cases above what the elected official makes. That's part of the problem that you've had all along. And when Mr. Ellis approached me with some questions, and I did some numbers based on number of employees, if you left it as it's currently setting, you'll have over 31 appointed positions and administrators of those appointed positions, or chief deputies, as you will, making more than your elected officials. And then you add longevity, and that it makes it even more than that. So I'm even excluding longevity, which elected officials don't get. When Steve approached me, I, he wanted me to put in some numbers to see what it would take to get to where that wasn't the case. By moving the people to the 517 as he has proposed, and then adding the 3% to that 517, that knocks it down to only five appointed positions that are making more than elected officials, which is a more appropriate number. The other issue you've got is, you have elected officials, for example, your auditor is at a 517. All of the other elected official positions are 516, except Harrison, which is a 515. We're all elected officials. There's no requirement to be the auditor, there's no requirement to be the treasurer. There is a requirement to be the assessor, county and Harrison. So I guess I'm not asking that we be treated better than anyone else, but if you're going to treat all elected officials the same, then we all need to be treated the same, which would be either moving us all to the 517, or moving the 517 down to 516, or however else you wanted to look at it. The other issue is, Steve didn't ask, and Randy brought this up, about the midpoint, he didn't ask to take to the midpoint. But by leaving us at the 516, with only the 3% cost of living, which was proposed in the budget cycle, we're below the 25 percentile that Baker-Tilly study said originally back in 2023. So the gap just keeps getting bigger and bigger. And I know there's only so much money, and you've got to do what's right for the county and for the taxpayers, but you still have to make the adjustments correctly across the board. So I just wanted to give you some insight into part of the discussion that I had with Steve, the numbers that he got from me, and why he was requesting the 517 plus the 3. Because that puts the elected officials all on the same board, regardless of the office that they're holding. And it, that would be just enough to get them over all of the appointed positions that were making more than elected officials. It puts us almost the same.
Do you have a cost on that?
I can get a cost. I've got it in a spreadsheet. I think it was 100 and, to move us all to the 517 plus 3, I think, was like $90,000 or something like that. But I would have to look at it to get exact numbers.
Michael?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I understand. So you have adopted a 2026 salary ordinance already. The proposal to amendment, to amend it, might be problematic in terms of whether, if you're proposing an increase, which I understand it is, in terms of advertisement or consideration of this issue. I, yeah. I don't think we can, you know, that salary ordinance that you adopted was advertised at those amounts, and I don't know why, if we're increasing it, we wouldn't have to do the same.
So this would be a more appropriate, a February request? Oh, you can't change it?
I think this is the last opportunity to change it, is my understanding. That's why I did.
I mean.
We can't, I'm sorry to jump in, we can't change this, we can't change, legally, we can't change it after, in January or February?
You cannot adjust an elected official's salary in the year, for the year that they are served. You can adjust their 2027 salary in 2026, but you can, once the salary ordinance for elected officials is adopted, there might be a statutory provision, Randy? there might be a statutory provision, Randy, that allows it if the commissioner, I think there might be something that says that the commissioner's consent to it, it's permissible, but I would want to verify that before stating it as fact for you. But, in order... So what would the new numbers be for the auditor, treasurer, not the auditor, the treasurer, clerk?
I think the way I understand it, approximately 90,000 more?
We would have to advertise that.
Okay, so it can't be done. Legally, it cannot be done.
I mean, we would have had to have advertised it for this million 2.7.
Mr. President?
Does he need to withdraw his motion?
I, I, yes, I mean, I don't think we can consider increasing the salaries without advertising that to taxpayers.
Mr. President?
I, I would suggest if, if the council wants to raise those salaries, which seems reasonable, Mr. Gardner, we should have another meeting in December and raise the salaries. I mean, that's all it is, just either wait a year and they're, they're underpaid, or go home and suck it up.
It's 10 days, I mean, you have to advertise and, you know.
I understand that.
It's the Tribune is sometimes a little, you know, tricky in terms of when they run it. But I'm looking for the answer to that question about changing the salaries in the current.
So as of right now, he needs to withdraw his motion?
Yes, I do not. That would be my recommendation.
Do you, do you want to, did you have a question down there first? Okay. Do you, do you want me to, I mean, do you want to do another special meeting, or is this just a dead issue at this point?
We can have a Christmas Eve. It doesn't matter to me. If we want to have another meeting, New Year's Eve, Christmas Day, Christmas Eve, it doesn't matter to me. Whatever you guys want to do. We'll call it.
Okay, so, so is there anything that needs to be done right now in a meeting such that we could readdress this down the road?
I guess what Michael's looking up right now.
Yeah, give me, bear with me just one.
Copy. All right, for the moment, while they're doing that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to withdraw this motion, and then if we need to remake it in a different way, we will.
I second the motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to speak whenever I get a chance.
Brad's the chairman of the Budget Committee, that's why he's budgeting.
Commissioner Klinkenberg, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I guess I would just ask, why weren't all elected officials, including the council and including the commissioners, just raised to midpoint like everybody else? And wouldn't that have been simpler? I, I just don't, I guess I don't understand why two groups were excluded from that. Is there a reason? I, I'm not, I don't understand.
So for myself at this point, I have publicly made a commitment that I will not vote to raise to give us a raise, period. With commissioners, I felt like they were reasonably compensated, plus have the vehicles. And so, and I looked at other commissioners' pay throughout the state, and it seemed on par, if not above, what some of the others were of comparable size. That doesn't mean that I'm right. That's just, somebody else can make a motion and it be different than this.
Yeah, most of the other commissioners are part-time. I mean, I don't know if you have a problem, if you don't think that we actually work full-time. I mean, our vehicles are actually a part of the highway fleet because we are on call 24/7/365. And when there's a storm or whatever, we maybe have to go up to Fontanet, we might have to go down to Prairie Creek. I just want to make sure this isn't a political move, why we would not get something.
Again, I, I excluded us from this as well.
Okay. I, I don't quite understand, but thank you.
Thank you. Michael, did you have an answer?
I.
Are you still looking?
Yeah, no, I mean, 36-2, 36-2-5-3.5. Talks about the additional compensation for the assessors. Give me, you guys, I, I mean, we are still in the elected officials portion of the meeting. I think this is on the agenda, at least I thought it.
The highway department was, that was the only one? Councilman Gentry, did you have something you wanted to say? Not on this?
Include this.
Okay, yeah, me too. The motion has been withdrawn, Michael. Are we able to move on?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to have the floor.
Hold on just a second. Councilman Anderson?
As you know, in the budget, we know we're going to lose quite a bit of money this year, next year, '26 and '27, in income. But everybody on this council, when we talked to them, said they wanted to get all employees up to midpoint. And now this is county general money. Our county general, we're, looks like we'll lose a million dollars this year, maybe two or three next year. But just to raise the elected officials all to a midpoint plus 3, the cost is $33,000. That's not counting FICA, PERF, you know, anything like that. But the highway department went to midpoint in '24, in '25, we moved the clerks, the courts. And so the goal in the budget at that time was to get everybody to midpoint. And so that, that's what some of this is based on. But I got some new figures here on the elected officials. Not sure if this counted the coroner in that position. But what I say we do is, is have another meeting and discuss it.
Is that a motion?
No, we don't have a motion. That's. That's a suggestion, and we can do that. Other feedback?
Councilman Gentry? Yep, you got the floor.
Go ahead. I apologize.
I, I don't have anything to say about this. I'm ready to just, are we moving on?
I do have something to say about this.
About this, all right, let's say this and...
So it's Indiana Code 36-2-5-13, Change of Compensation of County Officers and Employees. So it provides in subsection D, it says, "In the year in which a newly elected county officer takes office, the county fiscal body may at any time change the compensation for holding the county office for that year if, one, the county officer requests a compensation change, or in the case of the county executive body, a majority of the county executive body requests the change, and the county fiscal body votes to approve the change." So I think what I was thinking about there was, maybe only applies to newly elected officials. So in subsection C, it provides, "Except as provided in subsection D, the compensation of an elected county officer may not be changed in the year for which it is fixed. The compensation of other county officers, deputies, and employees, or the number of each, may be changed at any time." So I do think if you want to do something about it this year, if you do want, want to do something about it for next year, it will have to happen this year.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion that we have another budget meeting and, and a meeting with full council before the end of the year. That's my motion.
I second that motion.
Motion by Councilman Anderson and a second by Councilwoman Wager. Any further discussion from council on this? Roll call vote.
Randy Gentry?
Aye.
Nancy Alsop?
Aye.
Brenda Wilson?
Aye.
Steve Ellis?
Aye.
Vicky Wager?
Aye.
Brad Anderson?
Aye.
David Thompson?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We will determine a date, end of the meeting?
Councilman Gentry?
I have the floor now?
Yes.
After that mind-numbing process, I'm not sure any of this is going to matter much or sink in, but I wanted to correct for the official records some things that were said at the last meeting. And, Mr. President, I asked, I have actually three items that I want to address. I'm come up here to, so I can actually see my colleagues on the council. The last meeting, the president stated that we had met, our wives attended, and that we had worked out our differences. It's probably the farthest thing from the truth. That was an attorney-agreed meeting where my arm was twisted. I was asked if I would do this. I think it was all part of an attorney's plan to get a hearing that was scheduled by a special judge so that it would be continued. To the extent that the judge continued my case, that goal was accomplished. But that case is still continued. I believe with the crowd at last month's meeting, the president failed to read his letter, that his attorney provided my attorney, and he skipped over this, so I wanted to make sure that I read this. It's a printout of a screenshot. It looks like it was a text message that was printed out by his attorney, provided to my attorney. I said, "Dear Randy, apologize for the comments that were made following the Vigo County Council meeting on October 14, 2025. I also would like to offer my sincere apologies to you and your family, if you or they are in any fear. That was never my intention. Moving forward, I intend to continue to work with you and the other council, other, excuse me, the other members of the county council in the best interest of the taxpayers of Vigo County. David Thompson. What happened after the October voting meeting has been portrayed a million different ways on social media, on the street corner, in the media. Rest assured, there's an active Indiana State Police investigation that's ongoing. Those findings will be transmitted to a special prosecutor. There's no room for threats between members of this council. If I had made those threats to any one of the members of this county council, I would have been arrested on the spot. This council would not have allowed that type of action to stand. What was said, Mr. Thompson said that he was going to punch me in the face and break my nose. The chilling effect of that statement has resulted in many missed days at my real job. A cost to provide protection to myself and my family. I've paid for my own protection at every council meeting since at a cost that exceeds the cost that, or the amount of money that I make to do this job. More importantly, the chilling effect of the statement has resulted in my personal ability to not feel comfortable being able to speak up and express an opinion. I don't understand why the Terre Haute Police Department thinks that this is okay. I called the mayor on the way home from the meeting. He's not done anything about it. Is there a human being that can tell where this type of action is allowed in government? Can an employee in one of our departments threaten another employee? Can a department head threaten an employee with harm? I'm not sure why this is allowed at any level of government. The consequences have been profound. Like I said, I'm afraid to speak up about things. I'm afraid to ask questions. I have information that I would like to express tonight, but why would I take the risk to harm myself or my family? Seems that bullying tactics rule today at all levels of government in Vigo County. I have little confidence to expect anything but what I have found since being caucused in to serve on this council. Being in the middle makes me realize that all that I thought about our local government is factually true. It's sad. I know nobody cares, but I wanted to correct the record. I have not forgiven David Thompson. I have no agreement to move on, and I anxiously await the criminal investigation that is ongoing. Next, there's been lots of media comments about the school funding oversight board, and numerous people have asked, "What happened to the ordinance to maintain, to maintain the power with the people?" It has been expressed to me by lawyers way smarter than me that the ordinance is valid and legal. The president and legal counsel were not present at the Sunshine Meeting in October. While numerous rules have been tossed around, I guarantee after extensive legal review from several of the largest law firms in Indiana, there were no irregularities in introducing and passing the ordinance. It required a simple majority and received that vote in October. The president, under no circumstance, has any authority... The president, under no circumstance, has any authority to refuse a sign and ordinance. He does not have veto ability. If you all discount any of what I have mentioned and want to agree with those that say that I'm wrong, say that the other lawyers are wrong, that the largest law firms in Indiana are wrong. Rule 15 of the county council duly adopted rules by this county clearly prevents the disregarding of what is passed. The president, at a meeting, declared that it passed. The ordinance stands. Let the public understand those that opposed the Oversight Committee deserve a voice, and it has been looked into. It's estimated that just to retain the law firms needed to defend this in court, it would cost nearly $100,000, plus a burden to taxpayers and an unknown cost. There's those willing to fund a legal challenge and hire the best lawyers in the state to return the voice to the people as the ordinance established. I'm not a crystal ball reader, but I think there is a tone that is strongly... Excuse me. I think there's those that strongly oppose the idea that a non-accountable body has some kind of authority over a school board and an elected county council. I don't know what the future holds, and I don't know whether there will be a legal challenge, but I wanted to update the public. The ordinance is still there. Whether local people want to say that it isn't. Finally, and I think the most important thing, and again, I know we've been through a lot already in the first 30 minutes of this meeting. I watched from afar as well as in person as we conducted a series of meetings, gatherings. The testimony of students at numerous meetings of this county council depicting deplorable, dangerous, and hazard conditions at our school remains very concerning to me. I want a full investigation from every county department that can assist or has a role in assisting to determine the safety of our children now. Building inspector, county health department. Is it safe to have a cafeteria operating these schools? State Health Department, state fire marshal, any other agency, local, county, or state that investigate these claims of mold standing sewage in the halls, sewer gas in the hallways, hallways full of rain runoff making for slippery hallways? I mean, these county school teachers would have an OSHA claim if these hazards exist. The county council meetings and the gatherings at the Terre Haute, county council meetings and that gathering at the Terre Haute South painted a horrible picture and has lots of people asking, "Is it safe for our children to be at the schools?" The public, the taxpayers, the school board needs to know. We need to know now. I implore the commissioners to get this review started immediately and provide us a comprehensive report in January to its findings. The school will soon be empty for break, so without delay, let's get to the bottom of this ASAP. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other communication from elected officials?
I promise I'll be short. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the county council and the commissioners for providing the storage space that they did down at the jail facility for our files and then the subsequent renovation of our office space. We were actually, because Mark Clinkenbeard offered his services as the contractor for the project, we actually came in under budget on the renovation. I have submitted, and the state came and inspected the buildings and the renovation, and they have, we have already started submitting claims for reimbursement for our costs of the 1,912 square feet from the building of a total of 229,440 that we submit for reimbursement on our quarterly report for the 92,000 total, and then for the 4,109 renovated space at $16 a square foot of 74,773 costs. We're getting 30,000 of that back over the period of reimbursement. So, I just wanted to thank you. At the end of the year, I went to give a report, and I want to thank the commissioners for listening to us and answering our prayers to have more office space. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected officials? Alright, we'll move on to public comment.
Mr. President, council members, good evening. Before I go any further, I want to say this clearly. There is no doubt in my mind that every one of you fully supports the public safety divisions throughout Vigo County. No doubt in my mind. You have shown that support repeatedly through your decisions, your cooperation, and your commitment to this community. So, please don't take this statement as anything other than what it is, a message of support and urgency, not criticism. For more than 18 years, decades, our county has lived with significant radio coverage gaps. Every agency, law enforcement, fire, EMS, EMA, has felt that impact. For nearly two decades, we've all had to work around these failures, hoping temporary fixes would be enough, but they aren't, and we all knew they never were. Now, with the introduction of the public safety tax and excess funds in that line item, we finally have the dedicated funding to solve this problem once and for all. This project, the countywide radio tower expansion using Motorola's proven public safety technology, is exactly the type of critical infrastructure improvement those funds recreated to support. This upgrade will eliminate the coverage gaps that first responders have battled for decades, provide true countywide reliable communications, and give our first responders, my men and women, the confidence that when they key the mic, they are heard. This isn't a luxury, not at all. It is a long overdue necessity. Council members, I know all of you are committed to protecting our community and those who serve it. That's why I'm here, to reinforce how vital this project is and why now, with the proper funding infrastructure in place, is the time to act. We've kicked this can down the wrong road, along the road, long enough. Brad, you know that. Our first responders deserve better. Our citizens deserve better. And with your continued support, we can finally deliver a communication system worthy of the people who rely on it every single day. I'm not the expert. I have men and women that will come up here when this is presented. We didn't present it. We asked for it to be on the agenda. The commissioners put it on the agenda. I have the utmost respect for my fellow council member in the past, Councilwoman Morris. He gave his opinion. It's his opinion. I'm asking you to listen to my experts, my men and women, who live and breathe communication every day. They'll be able to ask you some of the questions about timelines that might be a part of your questions. I will ask that if you cannot vote on it today, then when that meeting happens by the end of the year, we would like to be on the agenda again. I ask for your support. I thank you for your time, your dedication, and your unwavering support for public safety in Vigo County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, President Jay Umball, president of Local 758 Terre Haute Professional Firefighters. We, as a local union of the firefighters, sent you a support letter for the radio project. I want to make a short statement. I concur with Chief Scott on the technical part. I'm going to keep mine short. I totally disagree with what Commissioner Morrison said when it came to the project itself. It is critical. There's three words that sums it up. First responders' lives. We've been fortunate, due to unreliable communications with our current radio system, that we have not had a tragedy within a first responder or our members. All I'm going to say, I'm not going to get into the technical part of it, but as a user of the system, and as all first responders, when we push that push to talk button, we want to be able to communicate, because that could be a firefighter lost on low air in a building. It could be a police law enforcement officer, 3:00 in the morning, doing a traffic stop, confronting somebody with a weapon, or an EMS worker with a mental health patient who's turned violent. We need these communications to be reliable when we go to push that button, because first responders' lives matter. And we have avoided a tragedy, but I work on the east side for the city. I've been out Rose Holman Meyer. I know when I've pushed that button, I don't have a response on the other end. And there is going to be a time when our lives matter. Thank you. I hope you support it.
Thank you. Any other?
Hello, members. I'm Matt McCullough, chief of Riley Fire Department. I'm here tonight also to speak on behalf of all the county fire departments. Communication, as everybody has said, has been an issue for years. For the good side, the community has grown so much in the outlying areas that it's becoming more and more of an issue. This isn't something new. As Jay Umball said, this is something that we've been lucky has not been an issue. Communications are a high priority. In any scenario, police fire EMS. This is a current issue, even to this day. We get busy signals because the system's overtaxed. Currently, just even the other day up on the interstate when we had the big accident, there were numerous times that we weren't able to get out. Obviously, those are the high-risk scenarios that radio traffic is important, whether you're in a building or out of building in a natural disaster. It's just, it's going to happen. We're just buying our time, and we have been very, very lucky up to this point, so. I appreciate everybody's comments on it, commissioners and councilmen, but this isn't something at this time that we can just keep pushing. There'll always be something else on the agenda. There'll always be something else at the same time as this is being brought. So, I appreciate everybody's thoughts and input on this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Thompson and members of the county council. Come before you today to offer the support from the city administration that a radio solution is found. So, we acknowledge the complications when it comes to public safety. There's a 911 committee that has really handled the conversation before you all tonight, and I'll let them present and kind of bring their options to you. I understand that there is some urgency to this that we are not necessarily privy to, that the city, as we don't kind of bid out and do the project ourselves. But what we can comment on is the complications that we have seen with our firefighters, specifically in EMS personnel on the east side, which has created some safety complications to our knowledge. So, we did want to make that statement today. Secondly, I do want to publicly comment, since it was publicly commented about myself, that the Terre Haute Mayor's Office has done, quote, "nothing" about the situation between two council members. That is not true. We have reviewed it ourselves, and we continue to also await kind of the decisions made about that case through the judicial system. There's a process for that, and we acknowledge that process and are hyper-aware of that process. And those comments made of the mayor's office and the, you know, a council member being on the police department as if he is shielded to attempt to say that he is being shielded in some way, shape, or form are strictly false. And I didn't want to come up here and say that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Thompson, gentlewomen, gentlemen of the council. I'm Scott Dalton. I'm a battalion chief with Terre Haute Fire Department. I was also appointed as the chair of the radio committee underneath the 911 Advisory Board. This committee was born because of safety issues in our communication systems that, as Chief Scott mentioned, has been many, many years. So, there's a few things. One of the things that I think was a misconception is the timeframe and this being rushed, which when we're called to present, we can address that. But one thing I did want to bring up was Commissioner Morse's statement on it's important but not critical. I've had great dialogue with him, but I could not disagree more. And as the committee presented the proposal, this solves a bunch of safety issues, including interoperability with not only intra-agencies within Vigo County, but also mutual aid agencies that sometimes not only fire, but law enforcement has to use. Two things that we talked about and that we worked to solve was coverage, which is areas of marginal to no coverage in this county, and also capacity, which is the amount of people who can be talking at one time. To represent some of the things we deal with, I've removed the antenna from my radio to simulate a marginal coverage area. And I'm just going to ask my public safety professionals, whether it be law enforcement, EMS, or fire, if they have ever heard this sound. Has anyone ever heard that? The notorious beep.
Fire ground four.
It likes to talk a lot. That beep tells me that I cannot communicate. Chief McCullough mentioned the bad wreck and the amount of times that he could not talk. I know that this meeting has went a long time already, so I'm going to spare you the pain. In the 2023 storms, we had 1,000 in two hours. Some of those lasted one minute. One minute that when we tried to talk again, we couldn't. I think of Captain Kane, who had smoke in the building, and he was trying to manage resources, and he never could talk. I wholeheartedly disagree that this is not a critical situation. President Umball talked about firefighters' lives, and I agree, we have to worry about our first responders. This absolutely affects our community members, too. This is probably the first time in 32 years in emergency services that I have seen such a collaboration between law enforcement, fire, city, county. That speaks to the volume and the criticalness of this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Good evening, council. I won't be up here long, speak very long. I know you've heard a lot of talking this evening, and everybody wants to get on with their evening. Derek Feld, Vigo County Sheriff. I just want to point out, on behalf of the sheriff's office, we as well support the tower project moving forward. It is something that law enforcement, first responders, fire personnel that we do deal with, not just on a daily basis, but pretty much on an hourly basis. So, especially out in the county, the areas that we respond to, it happens fairly frequently. So, on behalf of the sheriff's office, I think I can speak on behalf of the Terre Haute City Police Department as well. We definitely support this project. I've submitted a letter of support, which hopefully you've all have had a chance to look at. So, again, thank you for your attention on this matter.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name's Chris Doty. I am a two-way radio technician, shop owner. Been in Terre Haute since 1969. My dad started the business. And I understand all these people here, and I, you go through my phone, I have more first responder phone numbers. All my friends are cops and policemen. I do all this stuff day in, day out, and I understand what they're saying. Only thing that I have came to these meetings about is I want, I have been urging and saying, talking to people, you need to be sure that what you do actually does what you pay for. If you don't have some independent arbitrator, now, I don't want it to be me. You need to hire, excuse me, hire someone from out of state or someone that, you know, whenever we built a system for the city of Terre Haute, they hired a guy from a company from New Jersey. He came in here, and before they would sign off on that last job 25 years ago, we drove every road in the city of Terre Haute to verify that we did what we said we were going to do, or what the manufacturer said. Right? We had to prove the coverage before they would pay us at the end. And the only thing I'm asking for, and I understand that these guys got issues, but somehow, some way, somebody's got to have a yardstick here and say, "You got what you paid for." paid for, right? Because if you don't, you're going to get to the end, and all you're going to find out is the money's gone, so the project's over, you know? So I looked at some of Jeff's papers. I came to a meeting like last Friday, and I, and I'm, I just want someone, I see some problems, and you know, your coverage is good, and you'll fix all those dead spots, but until you can control who has access to all the towers, you're never going to fix your capacity problem. There's all, you know, the state of Indiana's system has 300,000 radios giving access every tower. So anytime something's bad happens, like that thing on the highway, you're going to have the state police, you're going to have the IDOT. Everybody's going to be using those systems, all right? I advocate the county should own their own system and use it in conjunction and in parallel with Project Use Your Safety. Don't do a WAF Project Use Your Safety, but if you've got all this money here, you just need to look at and do the right decision. This may be the most important decision that you guys make in your whole career here on this, because it's going to set the tone for what happens on public safety communications for the next 20 years, right? And, you know, I'm old, I'm ready to, I'm trying to get out of work, okay? But I just want, and I'm a taxpayer, and I do, and I live in Vigo County, and I have my reasons, so be sure that we don't waste taxpayer dollars, okay? And so I would hope that the, you, the council here would say, hey, and why rush to the end here? The outcome is more important than hurrying up and getting it going before you actually have all, everything all figured out. Somebody has to decide in the end when, if you get what you paid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
President? Mr. President?
Yes.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
No. Okay. Right now. Any other comment? All right, we will move on. Reports from committees. There are none. Resolutions and ordinances other than appropriations. A, interlocal agreement, Vigo County Prosecutor's Office, Vigo County Council, Terre Haute City Council, City of Terre Haute, Vigo County Commissioners. Michael?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So what you have before you is a proposed interlocal agreement relating to primarily asset seizures that occur through criminal investigations. As the interlocal agreement outlines, there are statutes that govern how those proceeds from civil forfeiture actions are to be administered, and during the course of our last audit, it was asked whether or not we had anything in writing with regards to our seized asset fund. We did not have anything at that time. It was recommended that we adopt some, adopt an interlocal agreement, or that that would become an audit finding through our next audit. So what you have before you is what was developed. This does not change anything about the way the process works or has worked. It's more just, as I said, delineating it in writing so the State Board of Accounts is satisfied when they come back here the next time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Is this something we vote on or just sign?
You would need to vote on it.
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilman Gentry, second by Councilwoman Wager. Discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Highway Department, Highway Employees 2026 Salary Ordinances amended request, page 10 of our booklet.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Larry Robbins, Vigo County Engineer and Highway Director. Coming before you tonight to request highway salaries be amended to reflect a 3% increase. Excuse me. As you know, highway, I did come before you in 2023, request for highway employees to be raised to midpoint for the Baker-Tilly Study. That was done in 2023, retroactive to January of that year. 2024, there were no salary increases for the highway department as part of that agreement. 25, they got the same raise that the rest of the county got, and then this year in '25, it seems that they were left out for whatever reason. This is important to try to keep up with competing salaries of like jobs in the community. It helps us keep, attract employees, and then retain the employees that we have. We did have three positions open here, just shortly here this last month, and we did fill all three, but now we quickly had one turn around and leave already before the end of the year to a job paying more for a CDL. CDL are required for, you know, most of my, most of my positions, but like I said, this just keeps us on par with everything else going, moving forward, so that those salaries don't dip, and we are in more of a trouble than we were before. As you know, MVH is paid out of a separate fund. It is paid from fuel tax and wheel tax, and in preparation for the budget this year, I did include, I tried to balance the budget with the revenues coming in. I did include a 5% increase just to establish all my other line items, so there is enough money in that budget to cover a 3% increase and then sustain that going forward.
Questions from council?
I've got one.
Councilman Ellis.
Not that I'm opposed to this by any means, but are we allowed to vote on this? Because we were just told a second ago that we couldn't vote on, since we hadn't approved it during the budget, should this be postponed to the budget meeting?
This is on the agenda, correct?
Yeah. I believe this was advertised on this agenda, so.
Copy that. Now, I understand. Okay. Just wanted to verify. Thank you.
And of course, this isn't coming out of county general, it's their own funding.
Correct.
And I think they can sustain that with this funding, and, and again, it isn't coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of their own funding mechanism, so I would support.
Any other discussion from council?
Yeah, Larry, this was just an overlook, wasn't it, on that?
I think so, I'm not for sure. We kind of talked to Budget Committee about increases and things, and I think it just kind of got, I don't know, for whatever reason, I think some of the other departments that made midpoint, I think was under the assumption that they were not going to be increased as well this year, but then they were, so that kind of left highway out, you know, outside looking in. So I think this would correct.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Anderson, second by Councilwoman Wager. Any further discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
And I think all the guys from the highway should stay till this meeting is over.
There's going to be a quiz.
It's going to snow tonight. The bear will get stuff ready.
Next on the agenda, Mental Health Court, Court Staff, 2026 Salary Ordinances amended request, page 17.
Why are you talking to your room, David?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Get out.
Hello, Mr. President and council members.
They don't want to hear you talk, Judge, they're leaving.
All right, I'll wait a second. I'm Dan Kelly, Judge of Vigo Superior Six, and with me tonight is Janet McBride, the Coordinator of the Vigo County Mental Health Treatment Court. And we are here, I think I do need to correct something on the agenda. It's actually not a salary ordinance amendment, but we are simply requesting some monies from the opioid settlement fund, and that's what this request is about. And we all have, we know about the challenges posed by the mentally ill in our community. It's a daunting problem, and obviously, it's a problem that's being dealt with in many sectors of our community. Law enforcement obviously deals with it. Public health, we've got, I think the mental health community is in many ways doing all they can, and I think there's an important role for the justice system as well. And so we have started within the past year, the Vigo County Mental Health Treatment Court, and obviously, one of the challenges is having funding to do the drug screening, to have people that can help with this, that requires case manager position. Our coordinator right now, Ms. McBride, is acting as the, not only the coordinator of the Mental Health Treatment Court, but she is the sole case manager as well. And so we thought, in looking at the monies from the opioid settlement, that the purposes of that seem to tie in nicely with what we're trying to do, because as Ms. McBride will tell you in a minute, we know that the people that are mentally ill in our community that we will be dealing with, that are taking up space in the jail, are often not only mentally ill, but they also have coexisting disorders, substance use disorders, and it's almost impossible to treat one without dealing with the other. And so that's the reason we've come to you, to see if you would consider approving some monies to help with our Mental Health Treatment Court from that opioid settlement. And here's Ms. McBride.
Hi. Thank you, council members. It's my understanding that one of the core strategies for the opioid funding is for jurisdictions to use litigation money to improve treatment options for people in the criminal legal system. It's further noted that, quote, "jurisdictions should fund evidence-based programs that connect people to behavioral health services and supports as an alternative to incarceration." And as I read that, that's exactly describes the work of the Vigo County Mental Health Treatment Court. As of July 22 of this year, Vigo County has had a certified Mental Health Treatment Court. In the past, we've had various versions of that that weren't as structured, weren't certified. It is currently provisionally certified through the Office of Court Services, and as you know, Judge Dan Kelly presides, and I'm the current Mental Health Treatment Coordinator. And I don't think I have to tell you that what an extremely high need in this community. And we need to talk about not just mental health, but the substance abuses, as Judge Kelly referenced. So far, everyone we have accepted has had significant mental health issues as well as substance use. They are not separated, they are one and the same. Many of these are the individual that you will see in the community that is obvious to you as a layperson, that this person is mentally ill, have substance use issues, and we often think, why isn't somebody doing something about that person? We know there's a significant presence of mentally ill and substance use population in the judicial system and local jail as a result of decreasing beds in the state psychiatric hospitals in Indiana. There's been an increase in unmet need, waiting lists for mental health and substance use treatment, and short-term hospitalization with limited resources available. This has led to significant homelessness with this population, increased contacts with law enforcement, and increased risk of incarceration among this historically disadvantaged population. Since 2015, there's been a point-in-time survey of the population in the jail, and from 72% to 83% of our local jail population have been in treatment at one time or another locally for substance use and mental health issues. Unfortunately, as I think Sheriff Phil would likely admit, the local jail has become the de facto mental health and addictions intervention housing for a number of our seriously persistently mentally ill and substance-involved citizens. Additional factors of shortage of affordable houses, housing, overcrowded jail conditions make it worse. All of these combined to create a disenfranchised, mentally ill and substance-using population in great need of assistance for a healthier lifestyle to decrease criminal involvement. We're well aware that this opiate funding must be used for those with substance use disorder, and it will probably be all or almost all of our population, but we would ensure only those that had those significant substance use issues were involved. We know that individuals with mental health conditions are disproportionately represented in the justice system. Research suggests that more than one-third of individuals arrested in the United States have an underlying health condition, and those with co-occurring mental health and substance use disorder are 12 times more likely to be arrested than the general population, six times more often than individuals with mental illness alone. So these are some of the most vulnerable in our community, some that cause lots of havoc throughout the community. And in addition, contacts with the justice system pose significant risk to the individuals involved. Police encounters can escalate tragically, jail can worsen mental health symptoms, and lack of mental health and addiction treatments means individuals often go without the services they truly need. That's not to minimize the good services that are being offered in the jail, but they need much more than that. Fortunately, there are evidence-based practices and promising strategies can use to improve outcomes for these individuals. Mental Health Treatment Court is non-traditional and uses a problem-solving model. Effective intervention, evidence-based treatment in its policies and procedures, we refer out to licensed people in the community. We have written referral agreements with a great number of the service providers in this area. I'm going to kind of shorten this up a little bit for you. The goals are tovert individuals with serious and persistent mental health and substance use disorders into treatment rather than incarceration. Some of the individuals we have gotten out of the jail, maybe sent them to sober living, had extremely intensive contact with them, get them involved in treatment. They're required by the Office of Court Services in this evidence-based program to have drug screens at least twice per week, to hold them accountable, to really make those changes that are needed. Additional goals include reduced legal recidivism, decrease the cost of incarceration, and improve safety in the community for the population and the general community. We have a number of people on our advisory team, treatment providers, Terre Haute Police Department, Vigo County Probation, Vigo County Prosecutor's Office, Vigo County Public Defender's Office, Director of Court Services. The program has a minimum of 15 months. It could be longer, but that's the minimum. They have the opportunity of a deferred prosecution if they successfully complete that program, have clean drug screens. Those charges could be forgiven. And we do not, we take low-level felonies, five and six, three and four on a case-by-case basis. This is not very serious violent offenders, no rape, child molestation, murder, not that sort of thing. And it's a voluntary program, they have to be willing to do it. Let me see, what else do I mean to tell you? So we are certified by the Office of Court Service, and they give us a minimal amount of funding, not nearly enough to provide what is required. At this point, we have five people in the program and a number of referrals. A case manager can provide services, up to 15 participants, because it is so intensive. Without funding for the drug screens and for the case manager, we'll be extremely limited in the number of participants from this community that we can service. So we are requesting funding, $169,522. I think there's actually an error on your budget there, primarily for full-time case manager, and drug screens are the biggest cost. I think I'll just leave it at that and open to any questions.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Which fund is this coming out of?
It would be opioid settlement fund that we will get for the next 18, that the county will get for the next 18 years. We're not requesting funding, funding from the general budget. Our other problem-solving courts, I think the Drug Treatment Court- Our other problem-solving courts, I think the Drug Treatment Court has funding from the general fund, from a couple case managers. We have not requested anything from the general fund. This is from our opiate settlement funding.
But which opiate settlement?
Restricted or unrestricted?
Yeah.
Do you know which one this is qualified for?
I think this, in my opinion, a request such as this could come out of restricted or non-restricted.
Either one.
They're clearly dealing with the target population.
And it's 169 versus, instead of the 139, 522, but it says...
It didn't add correctly. It should be 169, 522.
Okay, thank you.
What was advertised? Nothing?
Maybe I'm not the expert here, but we consulted with State Board of Accounts for this particular request. And the way they understood and explained it to us, you're asking for a position for '26, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, what you're doing, you're asking for is to amend the court staff salary ordinance to add that position for '26. And you're not going, you would have to appropriate the money to fund this position in the '26 budget year, because you've already passed the budget as an additional appropriation in February for '26 to fund, am I making any sense here? To fund what you amended. You have to, you can amend it now if you want to, to add this position to the court staff salary ordinance, but you would fund it next year retroactively, saying, hey, we adjusted the ordinance to add this position, and now we're funding it for the next year. So, nothing has been advertised, because we wouldn't advertise a '26 budget additional appropriation in '25.
So, all we're doing is approving the addition of a position.
I think the, Brady explained it exactly right. You're not approving money for 2025, you're approving the position in 2025. You will have to come back in 2026 to approve the money for that position.
And what did the sheriff say to you last year?
Last year.
I guess the one difference would be that we aren't requesting it from the general fund, however.
That's right.
Mr. President?
What is...
Counselwoman Gentry.
One of my concerns is regarding this type of request, where we're using money to add a position, and that money is essentially fluctuating. It's not a solid base to build staffing off of. I also, it doesn't elude me that we recently decided to give $150,000 to Casey to do treatment to five, six, seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, ten-year-olds. One of the things is, is that we likely need a very solid review with the experts weighing in, is what is the best way to utilize these funds to deal with the opioid crisis that we have in place. I think we would be amiss not to think about, and this could be a good idea, but are we going to then, should we consider adding court staff to the drug court? Because that's what they're dealing with. I just think that we need a longer-term vision than to piecemeal this together, one piece at a time. I think it's the wrong way to go. I'm not ready to make a motion, but I think we should at least table it to get a little bit more input, rather than jump on this and then get stuck like we did with previous situations. We had to wait till '26 to approve the money and all that.
Commissioner Klinkenbeard or Switzer, did Tammy leave?
She did, yeah.
Mark, can I, I think the funding on this, the opioid settlement, I think she told me we get $161,000. Is that quarterly? Does that sound...
It's quarterly.
You don't think it's quarterly?
I can tell you what's in there.
Can you tell me what's in there?
Restricted has $1,020,000. Unrestricted has $218,000.
That's what's in there now, but we've already, we've already committed a lot from this funding for next year. So, we'd need to know.
I love what you're doing, Judge Ready, money on the tab.
Casey and Judge Ready, and then we've got some other things we've been talking with the commissioners on, on funding.
I don't know if this is helpful or not, but treatment courts are the cutting-edge, approved way to deal with this population in a criminal situation. And it's my understanding that that was one of the litigation priorities, to fund evidence-based programs that connect people to behavioral services and supports as an alternative to incarceration. So, it's very...
We get the same story from everybody that's asking for that opioid money. And we appreciate that. Do you have a place, an office?
My office is in the courthouse.
Do you have room for another person?
Well, we are talking about the possibility, Mr. Klinkenbeard talked about the possibility of the facility that houses the other court case managers. We would make it happen if it needed to happen somehow.
Well, I know we're running out of room, you know, for more positions.
The reality is, the funding we have from the Office of Court Services allows us to service less than four participants for the next year. If we do not have this funding, and I'm seeking other funding sources as well currently, we would have to come to the council and request funding from the general fund.
Does the state give us any money?
Yes, they give us $131,000 for the next year, for the entire program.
And that pays for your salary?
Yes, and some drug screens.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah, it's pretty minimal, very minimal.
Why would we, I look down here at the series 200s, and I've got $2,400 for a phone.
Well, and what that is, is it would be a phone stipend for two staff, the case manager and another staff. We are on our phones constantly. We give them to the participants, use a Google number, and that way, an office doesn't have to have a telephone even.
Okay, we go down to drug screens. Is this because you're going to be doing a lot more?
Yes. That would provide enough drug screens for 22 individuals for the year. And to be in the program, they have to have that number of drug screens, because that's part of the evidence-based program. We can't do it less often than that.
Council President.
We just received 1027 to 25, $161,292.16.
Is that for the year?
No, that was a, that was a quarterly payment.
Quarterly payment. I understood it to be $161,000 quarterly.
Yeah, so Tammy was right.
And I think the settlement was $932 million for 18 years, and we're two years into it. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
President, one follow-up, please?
Counselwoman Gentry.
Judge, how many peoples does the Mental Health Court service right now?
We just have five right now.
Five indivi, no, I'm talking about, how many people do you, how many staff?
No, there's only, she's the only staff. We have five. We're just getting it started, and we need more money so that we can have a position, so that we can service these people. We'd like to have about 20 to 25.
A case manager can service 15.
So, you can serve 15?
Well, if I was doing that full-time, yes.
She's the coordinator.
I'm doing the coordinator, the budgeting and all that, in addition to the case management.
Okay, I'll switch the question then. If you get this money, and Judge, you're not at the microphone, so people at home can't even hear you.
Sure.
So, if you get this money, how many people will we service?
20.
At least.
Yeah, at least 20. And the numbers, I mean, you could ask...
That's a lot of money for 20 people.
You could ask people at the jail. I mean, we have these people that are coming in, getting arrested over and over and over, and taking up very valuable jail space and causing all kinds of commotion in the community. We'd like to help those, those people. And that's the goal of this.
This is the most, it is expensive. This is the most severely impaired individuals in the community.
What's the overlap with the drug court, either one of you?
Well, these, the drug court has people that just have drug issues, and the Mental Health Treatment Court is a population that has a combination of mental health problems, serious persistent mental health problems that are leading them into frequent conflicts with police and leading them to be arrested over and over and over, but without committing violent, serious violent crimes. Those are the people that we're trying to focus on.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselwoman Wager.
Folks, can I ask you, if you didn't deal with these people, would they be in jail?
They would continue to be in jail, yes.
Every person that we've let into our program so far has been released from the Vigo County Jail upon the filing of a plea agreement between the public defender and the prosecutor that has them released from the jail, making space for, you know, more dangerous criminals that belong in jail, so that we can deal with these people and try and get them the help that they desperately need. That's what we're trying to do. That's the objective of the...
So, again, at the end of the year, we might have 20 people out of jail.
Yes, that's the goal, and that's why I think it should be attractive, given the challenges we have with the overcrowding of the jail.
Good question. Counselwoman Wilson.
So, is there an overlap with what you're doing and community correction?
So, community corrections is limited in what they can do as far as treatment. And this Mental Health Treatment Court is, as Janet said, it's an evidence-based treatment model that tries to get people in touch with serious services. And it's not just that they will be in with a mental health provider, but they'll also have the case manager dealing with them. They have to come to court twice a month and appear before the court, and we review how they're doing, kind of like the drug court does. But this is with a different population. And so, it's a very intensive program, and that's why, you know, 20 people may not seem like a lot, but it's 20 people that are getting help that they're otherwise not getting.
It was just my understanding that there was, that we pay an awful lot for, I think, a psych nurse, maybe, at the community corrections, that they do a lot of the same kind of thing? Maybe not. I don't know, you want to adjust that, or?
I'll tell you what I'd like to do. I'd like to second the motion of Mr. Gentry to table this till the first of the year, just so we can get some more information.
Okay.
I didn't want to misspeak or misrepresent what you do, Bill. I just question it.
No, you're correct. There is a psychiatric nurse practitioner that does treatment services, like a psychiatrist would, within the residential treatment center. The population we treat are primarily violent felons. They treat a lower level. People who do not succeed in their program end up inside, in my program, where they get individual in-house therapy, as well as treatment services and medication monitored by that psychiatric nurse practitioner. Most of our people are levels three, fours, twos. We have a lot of level twos hired in drug cases with mental health issues, that type, so.
Okay, so it's not really an overlap at all. They're too separate.
The only way we get them is if they do not succeed in that community-based program, then they come inside into our program, if they're not successful there.
Mr. President.
That's where the psych MP works, yes.
Call for the vote, please.
We've got a motion by Counselman Gentry to table, and a second by Counselman Anderson. Any further discussion from counsel? Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll be good with you.
May I ask, if there's anything...
We'll get with you, okay?
Okay.
And have some discussion.
Moving on to Veterans Assistant Part-Time Position Request, page 21.
Down low.
Yeah, that makes it nice, because I can't stand up, so that's a good thing. On the agenda here, it shows a part-time position request. Actually, what we're asking for is a full-time VSO, Veteran's Service Officer. The only part-timer we have is Charlotte Holt, who is our administrative assistant. And we would also like to consider taking her on full-time, because she answers the phones and makes appointments. And if we're going to bring on a third VSO, then we're going to need that extra time for her. Otherwise, it's going to be one of us making appointments, and that's not really what we're there for. We'll do it if we have to, but...
Well, we know at budget time, you know, you were, we had a percent and a half, one and a half people. And we decided that that time, that we did, if we make a part-time person full-time. But we were under the impression she was retiring.
No, no, that was Vicky Albright. Vicky Albright retired.
I know that.
And William Caldera took her place.
Yeah, and that's what we wanted to do, was to create a full-time position out of that part-time.
Okay.
And that was all that was budgeted, was a one and a half, and took that half and made a full-time. That was a mistake.
They actually asked for one additional VSO and their part-time person to go to full-time. That's what...
Right.
That's what...
Yeah.
That's what Vicky had asked for. And you voted on taking the full-time person to full-time.
No, the part-time to full-time.
Yeah, the part-time person to full-time, and not another VSO. So, then they would have three VSOs.
Okay.
Just to clarify, there's two VSOs and then the part-time employee who does the admin stuff. That was before the budget request, which I think Vicky requested a third VSO to be added, and then the part-time admin to go full-time. So, I think that's where the confusion is, because we have two VSOs now.
That was never brought to the council for budget, at budget session. It was just the one and a half people, one part-time, one full. And we, and we decided that we could do better with the full-time, and someone was retiring, and that, so. Okay. So, right now, you have two full-time and a part-time?
Two full-time and one part-time. And the full-times are VSOs. In other words, we're dealing directly with the veterans to get them compensation.
Yeah, that's how it's been for a couple of years now, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, Vicky came on January of 2024, and then she retired in September when you came on.
I can remember we hired you.
I can remember those days, too. I'm very grateful. We've done a lot of good. We want to do more.
Yes.
I've talked to some of the council members, I think the last time we were in here. When I came on July 14, 2020, yep, right in the middle of COVID, our office stayed open. We've still seen vets throughout it all. We made progress. But at the end of 2020, the VA paid into, paid veterans in the amount of about $24 million, okay? Since that time, the ending numbers for 2024, myself and Vicky for the last year and a half, we've increased that to $37,999,000. So, we've had over a $10 million increase in money coming into the, into the county in terms of veterans being paid. They live here, they work here, they buy cars, trucks, houses, the whole nine yards here. So, that's a significant amount that we've increased.
You have. I've talked to a lot of people that are very happy with what we have here now.
Yes.
And so, what you're requesting today is one part-time person?
Well, no, no, one, we'd like to get another full-time VSO, and then we could leave Charlotte at part-time, which is what she is now. That would work.
Counselwoman Wilson.
What was advertised, that they asked for? Did they ask for full-time? Part-time was advertised?
Yes.
So, we can't vote on a full-time position?
Yeah, yeah, it was advertised as a part-time service officer.
Okay.
That's all that's advertised. So, that's all we could even vote on today. And that's today, $18 an hour, part-time.
Okay.
I was not here when the budget was submitted back last year, or whatever. I was not here when the budget was submitted back last year, whatever with Vicky, but it's my understanding that we have officially been given a third, or that, so we have two VSOs and then that part-time person. And that, there was a confusion, and they just rolled that into the third full-time VSO, and that's what we're granted for this upcoming year. So the request for the part-time is just to keep an admin in the office so that we can continue doing that. So I think we already, we're already granted the third VSO position. We're just looking to add the part-time, or at least to keep the admin part. I believe that's what we're looking for, is Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the one other thing.
When it was presented, when Vicky, Vicky came in and presented, she did not say that admin, she just said VSO. We did not know that Charlotte was just the admin. We thought that she had all the qualifications to become the VSO. And they wanted to move her to full-time and an additional person. They didn't specify admin, you know, just all assumed it's VSO.
And the other, only other thing, the budget was printed out, and it has all three of us in the office currently listed as non-exempt. We've been exempt all the way up until now. And this is just what's coming up for 2026. But we were always exempt. We were never in non-exempt status.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, you say you're going to have a budget committee meeting? Are you planning to do that before we meet again in December?
Oh, yes, yes.
Can you get to the bottom of this and figure out what sorted all out, and then come back and tell us what your recommendation is, sir?
I'll put that on my list.
All right. Is that Santa's list? Is that Santa?
Yeah. We'll get back with you. Sorry about that misunderstanding, but. Yeah, so we're going, I make a motion, we table this till.
Motion by.
Our next meeting.
Councilman Anderson, second by Councilwoman Wilson. Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero to table. Moving on, Merit Officers 2026 Salary Ordinance Corrections, Section 6, page 22 of our booklet.
So, what's the correction here?
Ordinance correction.
Ordinance correction.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I think it was, we have 10 deputies on our evening shift. Currently, we have 10 assigned to evenings, 10 assigned to nights. And when we got the additional deputies, I think it was two or three years ago, that's what the request was. So there's basically a shift differential pay. It's $750 for evenings, $1,000 for midnight shift, depending on what shift you're on. So for the evening shift, it's $750 a year.
Do you have 10?
Correct.
Said nine, okay. So it's one additional person. Discussion from council.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Wager, second by Councilwoman Wilson. Discussion.
Sir, Mr. President, I don't understand what we're voting on. Are we voting on one? Are we voting on 10? What are we, what's the actual motion?
Voting on one, correct? One additional?
We already, yes, we already have the nine.
What is the motion?
Well, motion is to approve, motion to approve the quest line.
A motion to approve one what? I don't understand what we're voting on. I apologize.
Shift differential for an evening shift, evening shift differential, which is a $750 stipend a year for one employee.
So you're looking for $750?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation 2025-9, Building Maintenance, page 30 of our booklet.
Good evening. Ricky Hammond, Vigo County Building Maintenance Director, just here tonight to request reallocation of existing appropriation in the amount of $5,399 from janitorial supplies into new equipment. This would be for the purchase of a new floor scrubber for the Vigo County Courthouse. Currently, we have a company that we contract out to clean that, and the decision was made that our staff was going to take over the cleaning. And being a large area, they do have their own floor scrubber at this time, but they own that, and they'll be taking that with them at the first of the year.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Anderson, second by Councilwoman Wilson. Discussion from council?
Question for.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gentry.
So we're doing away with the contractor cleaning. How much is that saving us?
I believe that it was around 70, around $70,000 a year. I could get that correct number for you. And that's what we had, the plan we had in place when we originally moved all of our staff members, maintenance and cleaning staff, to full-time, we used, we tried to use some of that money to supplement, you know, the cost of us moving to 40 hours. And that, they do clean, that night cleaning crew does clean, like, the public areas of the courthouse, Summit Community Corrections, basically the public areas of the courthouse, Community Corrections, Purdue Extension. So our staff is going to be taking over all that cleaning.
Well, I would say thank you, because that's, thank you for saving money.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation 2025-10, Group Homes, Food and Equipment, page 32 of our booklet.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a reallocation of funds, it's already in the budget. $3,240 in professional fees, I'd like to have transferred back to institutional supplies and for food. I'll be happy to answer any questions here.
Questions from council? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilwoman Wager. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reallocation, or Resolution of Reallocation of Existing Appropriation 2025-11, Coroner, Transportation of Bodies, page 33.
Good evening, President Thompson, members of the council. I apologize for not being able to answer some of your questions earlier. When my department came up, I was actually working my part-time job, so I was unavailable. So, as Councilwoman Wager said, our cases are up this year. We're currently sitting at 127 cases. Last year was 127 total, 133 the year before that, 127 the year before that, and 126, I'm sorry, 196, 212 total cases, 196 autopsies this year, 224 last year, cases, 180 autopsy. So we anticipate that we will have more between now and the end of the year. So what we're asking for is a transfer from the general fund for body removal, transportation of bodies, in the amount of $12,000.
It was appropriated insurance for 2025, and they didn't use the insurance. So instead of asking for an additional, just move that money from insurance to the transportation of bodies.
For this year.
For this year.
For this year. And I know I'm getting ahead of myself, but the remainder in there is the $8,167, correct? That we'll talk about later?
Yep.
Questions from council?
Question?
Councilwoman Gentry.
So what happens if you don't transport anymore? What happens to the money?
If we don't transport anymore, it goes back into the general fund at the end of the year.
Nothing further.
I make a motion to approve, second.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Alsop, second by Councilwoman Wilson. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Yes.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation 2025-12, Courts, page 34 of our booklet.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for having me here. Charles Johnson, Chief Judge. We're here requesting a reallocation of funds. What we're asking for is $16,000 to go to drug testing, $62,000 to go to supplemental work release, as well as $24,000 to cover physician fees. We've worked with the Otter's Office, my understanding that there's fundings coming from the insurance and FICA salaries, so that they're already allocated to move over to cover those funds. Happy to take any questions.
Questions from council? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilwoman Wager. Discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation 2025-13, Veterans Assistance Laptop Purchase, page 35 of our booklet.
President, council members, we're just looking to move some of the money left over. There's a couple hundred dollars in a couple spots that just didn't get used up due, there's some transportation money, some printer money that was just left over. We'd like to reallocate that money to buy a laptop for when we do outreach, stuff like that. Tim has one currently out there at the VA, but it'd be nice to have one for myself to take it out for the weekend if we do something like that at the VA. We have had some events like that, so.
Questions from council? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Alsop, or motion to approve by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilwoman Alsop. Discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Ordinances relating to appropriations, Additional Appropriation 2025-57, Adult Probation, 2025 Remaining Costs, page 37 of our booklet.
Good evening, council members. I'm Leanne Reasonback, Chief for Adult Probation. I'm requesting that additional funds be appropriated in an amount of $14,275 from Fund 2100. This would pay for our adult probation officer position that is currently funded through the Department of Corrections. Every year, we're short slightly to fund that person, so we're just asking that more funds be appropriated for 2025.
Questions from council?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gentry.
Is this full-time position?
Yes, sir.
And explain to me how this is currently funded?
We have held a grant from the Department of Corrections since 2016. That grant is capped, the amount is $64,575. So that is funding for one full-time position. If we have someone with less experience, that will assist paying that, but currently we have, with the amount of experience the person has, that amount does not cover their salary and fringe benefits.
So we're on a normal basis? We're always short on this?
Yes, sir. And we're requesting that the money come from our supplemental fund. That money's taken in from probation user fees, so it's not from county general, it's from monies that probation takes in.
Thank you, ma'am. No further.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Wager, second by Councilman Anderson. Discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Additional Appropriation 2025-58, Group Homes, 2025 Remaining Costs, page, looks like page 38 of our booklet.
Mr. President, members of the council, Norm Lautermer, Executive Director of the Group Homes. So this is an appropriation of additional revenue from the non-reverting fund, it's a tune of about $43,100, to be separated into various line items, food, institutional supplies, wearing apparel, contractual services, specialty events, new equipment and furniture. You can see from the letter, various number of things we're going to be doing, things that related to Christmas activities, Christmas meals. We need to put some more money into food, now that both houses are going. This is, again, non-tax money, this comes from user fees that we recoup from DCS. At the time I wrote the letter, the Otter's Office reported that the fund balance was So there's more than enough money to not only fund this appropriation and what was budgeted during the budget meeting, which is about 90-some thousand. As a small report, financially, I will tell you that my budget for 2025 was $1,451,000. As of December the 10th, we billed $1,391,000. 75% of that went back to the general fund, which is $1,043,000. And about $343,000 would have went to this non-reverting. Some of it we've already used, some of it is in transit, not been received yet, and then, of course, we'll use some up tonight if we get approved. So we'll have one more billing, if you will, for this year. It won't happen until, you know, 3rd or 4th of January. But all we'll have to do is bill around $60,000, and we would have made up what the county budgeted for us. That is not even being open a full year. We didn't take any kids in January '25, and the first kid we took was February 24th of '25. So two months of not being open that we didn't bill for. So I think we've made an amazing turnaround, and as I said in the press release, and I'm sure that most of you've seen, we're just awarded a CARF certification, which is a certification where they come in and inspect you for a period of three days and give you credentials that allow you to keep kids for long-term care and to provide long-term residential, similar to Jabalt, but on a smaller scale. And so without your support, the council giving us the revenue that we needed to make similar to Jabalt, but on a smaller scale. And so without your support, the council giving us the revenue that we needed to make these changes, and, of course, without the commissioners who've been unwavering in their dedication to the kids and the community, then we couldn't have made that move to get that designation. So thank you again, you know, and we look forward to doing good things in the future.
Thank you. Questions from council?
David, the cash balance in there tonight was two hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-two, and then I saw that there's a deposit coming in tonight for another, I don't remember how much it was, but there'll be more money coming tomorrow.
Be more money. Thank you.
Mr. President, questions?
I got a... Councilwoman Gentry.
Sure, Lottemore, give me an update on the number of residents you have at your two houses.
Exactly tonight, at this point?
I don't care. Yesterday, yeah, next week, whatever you want to tell me.
That's important because it happened to me. I had two people adopted. Two people went to foster care. One was reunited with their parent in the past thirty days, and one tonight at four P.M. went to foster care. So as of tonight, we have two girls in the north house and two boys in the south house. And that's as of four oh one P.M.
As a fiscal model, are we going to see an increase in the number of kids that we're servicing? Because, I mean, fiscally, I don't know that that's the kind of numbers that is going to help us repay what the county's allotting to this.
We accept those children that DCS allows us to accept, given the parameters of their age and where they sleep. We accept those children that fall within our licensing guidelines, non-sexual, maladaptive, non-homicidal, non-suicidal, because we don't have those types of resources. We don't have a full-time nursing staff. We don't have the ability to administer medication to provide, you know, for those people that have rage issues. We're a non-touch facility, which means we don't restrain kids. And so, you know, we will take as many as possible to generate the revenue needed to try to offset these costs. But my hands are tied sometimes by licensing requirements. You know, people say, well, what are you licensed for, nine? Well, then why don't you have nine kids? Well, because we have a ten-year-old, and they won't let anybody above the age of thirteen sleep in that bedroom. Or we have a fifteen-year-old, and we can't put a ten-year-old in there because, or a sixteen-year-old, we can't put a ten-year-old in because the sixteen is of the age of consent. Or we have a girl here that's twelve, but we can't put a seventeen-year-old in that room with that girl because, you know, there's too much of an age gap. So those are rules that licensing puts in us all the time. And some of that stuff's not written. Disappointing to me because I would like to take more kids. My standard statement when, I can show you text messages from the staff, when they say, "We received a request about this kid," I say, "Take them." Well, then they say, "Things are of an issue," so then we can't take them. But, you know, they know the green light's on. That's all we want to do is serve kids.
How many kids out of the four that you have right now? How many are Vigo County kids?
One, two, three.
So you got three out of four are Vigo County?
Yep.
That's a shift. That's good.
Yep.
Do you have any type of idea? I understand you're kind of at the mercy of DCS.
Yeah.
Do you have any kind of idea as to what we can expect next year? Are we going to receive more kids? I mean, are you in communications with DCS? I mean, obviously, this is, we have to have more kids than four to, if our goal is, is to recoup the costs that we're outlining.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure that that's our goal.
Well, my goal is to put five kids in each home as an average. Five kids at a thousand bucks a day gives me two million per home at the end of one year at a one-point-eight or nine-million-dollar budget, whatever it went up to, you know, with the midpoint, by the way. Thank you. Or anything else that we've done in the budget. You know, we'll obviously bring in way more than what we've been budgeted for. But honestly, we're at the, you know, mercy of DCS. We just found out that, you know, that DCS reduced our rate for next year. We were scheduled at eleven forty-five, and they reduced it to nine sixty-two. So myself, along with every single residential facility in the state of Indiana, is filing appeals with DCS. We knew that it was going to happen. We didn't want to admit to it, but when you, as a state, reduce DCS's budget by eighty million dollars, there's no way they can provide the services that they can provide. So they're going to pass those trickle downs to us so that agencies like myself and even bigger ones aren't going to be able to get that type of revenue that they were expecting. So by Friday, actually, by Thursday, close the business, we will be filing the appeal. They did not allow for any type of cost of living increase, which is the first time in a great number of years that DCS never, that they didn't do that. And so, you know, we want to be able to try to get them to let us have a cost of living increase, because obviously, things are more expensive this year than they were last year.
You use a lot of language about, like, the amount billed. Have we had anything going on with DCS as far as you bill a certain amount, and they're giving us less than what we bill?
No.
So that's not happening?
No, not that I'm aware of. They set the rates at the beginning of the year, and then it's that kid times that day equals that rate, and that's what we bill them. I don't know if any, I don't know if it's happened. I'm not aware of it.
I just carry.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I hope not. I hope that, you know, what we're billing is what they owe us.
Nothing further, President?
Any other questions from council? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Wilson.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Alsop. Roll call, vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much, and everyone have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine, Prosecutor's Office. Page thirty-nine.
I think I can speak on it. They play, what do they pay out of it? They pay phone stipends out of, out of this fund, twenty-five oh one. They pay all the phone stipends out of it, and there was not enough appropriated. So they need an additional. And there's plenty of cash in there.
So it is fourteen oh five, one thousand four hundred?
No, 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 my bad. Sorry. So instead of using County General for the phone stipends, he's been, he pays them out of here. In fraction deferral, yes.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Waiger.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Wilson. Discussion from council?
Mr. President, just clarifying that this is the one thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, twenty dollars, and a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's the amount that we're appropriating?
Correct.
Thank you.
Roll call, vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash sixty, Coroner Autopsy Cost, page forty.
President Thompson, members of the council, we're asking for a transfer from the general fund of fifty thousand dollars into our autopsy fees. I will tell you, I don't anticipate that we'll even need half of that, but we are requesting it just in case because we are under, obviously, like Councilwoman Wager said, our cases are up for the year. So if everything works out, we won't need half, but we're going to try and protect ourselves and to answer Councilman Gentry's information from earlier, it will go back into the general fund after it's done. The other thing, the other thing, just real quick that I did want to bring up is, as far as I know, in the previous history of the coroner's office, it's never generated any revenue. It has generated revenue this year. We'll have a number at the end of the year that we'll share with you guys from body storage that has happened at the new morgue that we put in a few years ago, and then also for federal cases and stuff that they had not went after to receive payment for in the past. So, and I think that was fifty-two hundred or fifty-four hundred dollars that we just recently received for those cases, yeah? And I have made a request to the commissioners to start a non-reverting fund, so that way we can track that better rather than have it go into the general fund. So we'll know where that's at. So when things like this come up, we don't have to say taking it from the general fund. We can take it from that fund.
Thank you. Michael, the request is for fifty thousand dollars, correct? Getting back to what I'd said earlier, the resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation twenty twenty-five dash fourteen on the group insurance, there was eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars left from that, correct?
Correct.
So if we approve that, that money will go toward autopsy fees, and that fifty thousand dollars becomes?
Forty-one thousand eight thirty-three would only be the additional appropriation, because we'll use what's already appropriated insurance if they didn't use.
Correct. So would the first order be to approve?
Reallocation.
Reallocation. Councilwoman Wilson.
I'm sorry, I get down, yeah, I do. What are you basing the fifty thousand dollar, I mean, how did you come up with that amount?
Our average monthly cases are between eighteen and twenty-five. So you just take that, multiply it by the amount of the autopsy fees, and that gets us somewhere in that forty to fifty thousand dollar range. So.
So you'd be okay with thirty thousand?
I mean, I hope I'm okay with twenty thousand or less, but I can't control, I can't control that.
Just goes back to the cash.
Yeah, that's right. Try to lighten move.
You're trying. That's all that matters.
First order, I'll take a motion on resolution of reallocation of existing appropriation twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Motion to approve by Councilwoman Waiger, second by Councilman Anderson. Discussion from council? Roll call, vote, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Second order would be to amend this one, correct? To?
Forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Eight hundred what?
Forty-three.
Forty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-three.
Thirty-three, okay.
So moved.
Motion to amend the current request to forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilwoman Wager. Discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Brad Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Now we need a motion to approve the amended.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Waiger, second by Councilwoman Wilson. Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry.
Clarification, what are we voting on now?
To approve the amended.
Approved the forty-one eight thirty-three. I have motion, made the motion to amend it, and we approved that. Now we need to approve spending it. Appropriating it.
Aye.
Nancy Alsop.
Aye.
Brenda Wilson.
Aye.
Steve Ellis.
Aye.
Vicky Wager.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
David Thompson.
Aye. Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one, Mayor's Office, Warming Center, page forty-one.
Good evening, Council President Thompson and members of the county council. So I'm just going to start by saying I'd ask that you actually table this to January. I will not personally be able to be here at the January sunshine meeting and likely not the voting meeting. I've got to spend two weeks at Fort Benning, Georgia for the military, so I'll send A.T. for that. But what I am going to do is explain some of the comments as to why I'm asking for a table, allow the staff to do some more work, then bring the appropriation in front of you. So over the past several weeks, we've had extensive conversations with Pathways, EMA, and other social service providers about what is feasible to operate under and what criteria will best serve vulnerable residents through warming centers. Our core goals when we started this, when we initiated the working group and when the city committed the original thirty thousand, were guided by two principles. The first was to expand activation criteria beyond the strict temperature-based thresholds that we currently operate under. So our goals were to look at snow events, higher wind chill, I say higher wind chill triggers, but we're going from low single digits to, hopefully, in the teens, of course, and other dangerous conditions. The other goal was to improve coordination and communication, including the creation of clearly defined public-facing criteria so residents know what to expect and can reliably access shelter. These goals have remained central to our approach this entire time. So where do things stand with our current providers today? Our primary existing operator, Pathways, has expressed concern about meeting the expanded activation criteria. So they believe they can do what they've always done, which is that zero degrees and kind of in the negatives, low single digits. They've been clear that opening under broader conditions, which is what I pitched last meeting, such as snow events or higher wind chill thresholds, is not feasible for them this year without risking burnout or operational strain on an already thin staff. So when that decision was made, we said, hey, look, we understand that, but our focus is expanding criteria, not reinforcing what's already been done. So we respect and appreciate their honesty, because had they said, hey, we can do it, then they're not able to do it. You vote to spend, city council votes to spend, and then we're all in the same boat of, hey, we voted to do this. You cannot meet those obligations. Because Pathways does not believe that they can match the expanded criteria, we have started to actively explore other avenues, other organizations in the community to make sure we can expand criteria to warming centers. So we've got the previous plan that has been operating, and we're currently working with another provider to say, hey, we would like to commit thirty thousand from the city and thirty thousand from the county to add to the capabilities of a warming center and when they open and operate. So that's why we're going to ask that we kind of pause and table today. What we want to do is, we want to bring you guys an organization that can realistically operate under the criteria that meets the city's goals. And I say the city's goals, but really, they're really humane goals, and that's why we wanted to open up the warming center protocols. It would be premature for me to ask you guys to approve that funding today, and that's why we're asking that to be tabled. It allows us to confirm an operational partner, which we feel like will gain a lot of momentum Friday. We've got a meeting with an organization on Friday. They're meeting with their leadership tomorrow, and we think we're close, but we prefer to just wait. And it also, by asking to table, gives us time for a clear, sustainable activation model. We're committed to keeping you all informed of where we're at in that process. If we do get it by this end of December meeting, we can come back, and then if we're not back because it's not done, then it just would roll into January. I believe we're good to table something twice before we have to take action. Right, so that gives us those two meetings then. With that, I will take any questions, but what I will end is, this has been a very cold start to winter. According to Jesse Walker or, you know, Kevin Orpert, I know he's starting to get back on TV, but whichever of your news, you know, weather folks that you listen to, it's been the coldest weather in sixty years. And sure enough, with three inches of snow not once but twice in this county and city, Jesse Tohill, A.T. Ryan, and members of the police department, our social worker department are already seeing the impacts of us not adding to the criteria, right? Because remember, we do have some criteria. We do have a warming center. It just is very limited when it does open. And I really, you know, would ask that, as we kind of get this wrapped up, you keep that in mind. You know, we're not even in the dead of winter, and we're already experiencing severe problems throughout the community when it's under twenty degrees or under twenty-five, and it's snowing and it's wet. And we believe that this plan solves some of that. It does not solve everything, but it solves some of that. I do want to thank Doc Koinike from Vigo County EMA. We have been meeting with her, looking at the criteria. We've taken some of her feedback. I really love her long-term vision of what she wants to do to the problem, and we'll support her on that one day, but this is a temporary solution that we think we've got, and we look forward to coming back to you all with a signed document between the city and a primary partner on top of Pathways. With that, I'll take any questions, and if not, I completely understand.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Yes, Councilman Anderson.
I thought when you came the first time, we were looking at twelve to fifteen thousand. It was mentioned. Were a match?
That was one of the levels, but like I like to do, I said thirty. So that way, with the two fifteen-thousand-dollar appropriation request, you can choose to deny, to deny one of the two if you would so like, and then you would still have fifteen offered.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I was saying that right.
Yeah. Well, you know, I gave you options. It's not a Burger King where you can have it your way, but I wanted to give you options, Councilman Anderson.
Any other questions?
I just know when I checked my notes, I'm like, those aren't the same as this request.
Take the motion.
Thank you.
Oh, you're pulling it, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right. You're good.
Thank you.
Additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two, Otter's Office, remaining health insurance cost.
Yeah, I would like to request an additional appropriation from County General on the amount of one million three hundred thousand dollars for hospital benefits out of Fund Fifty-two Hundred. Open enrollment during the year allows coverage changes, which in turn affects the insurance premium and can result in shortfalls for the fund. The budgets are done one year in advance, and we cannot anticipate accurately the cost differential when coverage changes get made.
Questions from council?
What's the, oh, Mr. President, I have one.
Councilwoman Gentry.
Do you have any historical information on, I mean, one-point-three million? Is that normal, or, I think last year it was like a hundred and fifty thousand or something like that short. Do you remember? Oh, was it? Okay, all right.
I mean, it has historically been a, you know, a number that has certainly fluctuated, but it is more often than not been big just because you are, you know, you're negotiating your rate for the insurance in June, and then budgeting in September, October. Well, we have self-insurance. You know, we are insured for the first hundred thousand dollars for, so if those claims are higher year over year, you're not, your budget's going to run dry. And so I would say that one-point-three-million-dollar number is probably somewhat reflective of what it would, you know, cost to insure the first hundred thousand dollars of those claims that you ultimately are trying to save on. So it's more a byproduct of the budgeting process and the uncertainty and the actual cost of insurance flowing through to the county.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, or Wager, second by Councilwoman Wilson. Discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry. Nancy Alsop. Brenda Wilson. Steve Ellis. Vicky Wager. Brad Anderson. David Thompson.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Additional appropriation twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three, new radio tower and equipment request, page forty-three of our booklet.
That's me. All right. Good evening, members of the council, Auditor's Office. I think you've already heard a lot of information about this project. I just want to address a couple of things about it so we're all clear. First one, the timeline and why it appears to be short. We are here with that because you're here for that, and that is this. The committee was formed by the nine-one-one advisory board. I was asked to become a member of that committee in April of this year. We, along with Battalion Chief Dalton, Chief Deputy Stewart, the Shurri Creek Fire Department, were tasked by the nine-one-one advisory board and appointed by Commissioner Schweitzer to investigate these complaints, which you've all heard about. That process took some time, and we developed a presentation and reviewed it, went over it, basically made about four revisions, and at the end of the day, here comes October, and we get the final presentation and the final numbers. At that point, it's beyond council review for November because of advertising. And so it's a done project, because at that time, you didn't have a December council call meeting. And so that budget was going to sit there, and it would be re-looked at in twenty twenty-six. And it's going to be more expensive, we all know that. When the committee was told that the council intended to have a meeting in December, then it made no sense for us not to say to the commissioners and to all of you, why not bring this to you in twenty twenty-five numbers? Why would we sit on it and bring it to you in twenty twenty-six? And we know it's going to be more expensive. That's no, there's no ethical value in that, there's no reason for that. So it was simply an opportunity for us to say, here is the work, here is the cost in twenty twenty-five for your consideration. If we would have held on to it and brought it in twenty twenty-six, and one of you would have asked, well, did you know about this in twenty twenty-five? We sure did. Was it cheaper? It sure is. What would you have said then? So then we couldn't do that. That's just completely unethical and inappropriate. So that's why you're here. Yes, it's a shortened timeline, and we have all the respect in the world for that. But look at it from what our responsibilities are and our ethical obligations are to our taxpayers and to all of you. So that's the timeline, and that's why we're here tonight. The second question that has came along from other people we've discussed and members of the council was, yes, we know that you don't have to let this for an RFP or let this out for bid, and why shouldn't we do that? Well, there's a couple of things that I want to point out to the practical application of single sourcing this, and in our case, this is a Motorola project. And our committee firmly believes that this project should be funded, single source to Motorola. And here's why. The first thing is, we're simply expanding what we have today. We currently, there are two tower sites in this county that serve our public safety, and we're simply wanting to add three more to that existing system. We're not asking to add on to anything other than our state radio system that is a Motorola proprietary system, four towers, nothing else, just the towers that we want to add. We're not asking, nor saying, that we believe Motorola should be purchased by other agencies. That's entirely up to them. They can purchase whatever equipment they want to function on the state system. But the determination that it should be Motorola is because the state of Indiana, that is the contracted provider, and that is who we currently have, and we've had them for, as you've heard, over eighteen years as our provider. The second part of that is, if you think about breaking this up into different potential vendors, then we start having the finger-pointing game that can occur. If I bid and a tower developer bids this, and a generator, somebody bids that, and all of a sudden, we start putting these pieces together, the generator doesn't get wired correctly and starts and damages the Motorola equipment in the building, whose fault is it? Now we have a finger-pointing game going on. Somebody's going to say, well, that was Motorola equipment. And they're going to say, nope, that was the generator. And you can imagine all these people. In the meantime, all of that equipment has been damaged, and the county's on the hook for it until we can sort it out. And as you've heard tonight, this is not the kind of equipment that we can argue over insurance claims, or we can point fingers with vendors for weeks on end, and you have a public safety site that's out of service. And so when you think about multiple vendors being able to finger-point to each other about the problems, it can be as high as, the tower didn't receive the proper grounding, it gets struck by lightning, and the next thing you know, the county's on the hook for equipment. And we're going to go to Motorola and say, hey, your equipment's faulty. They're going to say, no, it was the tower, and here we go again. Or if the generator doesn't start, or if the roof leaks of the building and damages equipment. And so there are certainly solutions out there that may not meet that. But for this particular project, it is absolutely critical that we have a single source that we can hold accountable. So those are the things that we want to make sure. The other thing I would let you consider is the fact that if we use single source, now we have single source monitoring. So Motorola monitors the generator, the tower system, the equipment, everything about that project then becomes single source monitoring. If something goes wrong, they are alerted and they deal with it. So if it's not a customer responsibility, the fuel level becomes low in the generator at some point, sure, that's a county responsibility. But for day-to-day monitoring and ensuring the temperature in the building is correct, the generator's starting when it's supposed to, all those things, something happens that a piece of equipment in that shed is, becomes faulty and brings that site out of service, all of that is done by Motorola. And so we believe that those kind of things lend to a single source as part of this project. The other part of that is, we would talk about if you let this for bid. Let's just hypothetically say you start to let this for RFP. The challenge you're going to face is, every time you want to build a site, you're going to let an RFP on that calendar year. So in twenty twenty-six, you can let an RFP, but you have no idea what the cost is. We don't know. We'll just have to let it see. And then you have the inflation factor. Then in twenty-seven, you may do it again. In twenty-eight, you do it again. But again, each time, there's going to be an inflation factor. This particular proposal is unique in the sense that it provides the county a budgetary amount for the next eight years. You know exactly what your costs are going to be for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and all post-warranty through twenty thirty-three. So there are no unknown numbers here. You know exactly what you're going to have to budget each year for this project. And therefore, it gives you an opportunity to know exactly, as opposed to allowing this to go to bid and having a lot of unknowns. The rest of it is just that, it's coverage and capacity. I think you've heard all about that today. Just to give you some specifics, this year, we've had fifteen hundred busy signals occur in the first ten months of the year, so it's happening rather frequently. And as Chief Dalton pointed out, that's not a good number. And so we need to give consideration to capacity. And I know that there was a question about capacity earlier. This proposal more than doubles the capacity of our radio equipment today. We're adding three sites, but when you add three sites, you add more equipment, and that equipment then is going to be synced together. So we're going to go from a two-site system that a radio has to find the closest site to a five-site unified system where all the sites work together to provide saturation of coverage. And then the technology called TDMA is included in this. It is also, all of our subscribers are provided that at no cost. And now our technology is, we have more than doubled the capacity. So more frequencies or more channels, whatever technology you like, and now all of a sudden, we've addressed that issue. And the last thing I would say is just remember that this is about public safety. You've heard from people better than I about the importance of this project. But we want the council and the county to consider this in twenty twenty-five when it could be potentially the least expensive. We know this project needs to be done, you've heard all the reasons why. But for us, it's about bringing it to you in twenty twenty-five numbers as opposed to waiting till twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, whatever, when we know the cost will be much, much higher. So those are the things that I wanted to address to you. I'm happy to field any questions about the project for you. I have some folks here from the committee that will also be able to help you, and also the folks from Motorola could ask any technical questions as well. With that, I will leave it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson.
I've got a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
First of all, in kind of in relation to what Mr. Doty brought up, do we have, have we considered having a, like an independent third party oversee the, whatever it is that we decide to do to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for?
I would offer you an opinion, okay? And I'm not saying he's wrong or right, I'm just going to give you a different angle. First of all, Motorola provides a hundred and ninety-four sites in the state of Indiana. There are only four that are not a Motorola tower. So they are the provider for the entire state and all of the hundreds of thousands of radios and public safety. I believe that not only with that and the fact that they have been our provider for the past eighteen years without a problem whatsoever that's not been resolved, I think they've earned that, and I believe that they have demonstrated that they, we have seen their measuring stick. We know what they do. We've experienced them. And so, yes, you could pay somebody to come in and be a consultant. We listened to a presentation the other day, and that gentleman charges a hundred thousand dollars and twenty thousand dollars a month to manage the RFP, okay? I don't know if that's a good number or a bad number. But my point is that we believe that this vendor has demonstrated its ability to be solid and acceptable, and I've experienced it in my career in the eighteen years that I've been involved in this. So I feel like that we have a known factor. We know who they are, we know what they do, and we know their successes, and we have a hundred and ninety-four more of those throughout the state that they're delivering every day. So for that reason, that's why I believe we're good.
No offense to Baker Tilly, but we have the same, kind of the same situation when we were dealing with WIS and the employee situation.
Sure.
WIS dealt with eighty-some out of the ninety-two counties. But we still went with Baker Tilly instead, you know, and where we are now.
I understand. I appreciate that.
Okay, second question is, this is being funded out of the lit Public Safety eleven seventy account? Is that right?
And I will let Councilman, or Commissioner Schweitzer, he's our physical guru. We spoke with him, and he was the one that made that recommendation. If you want to talk on that, Chris?
Yeah, that fund has a substantial amount of money in it. And the fund stipulates, or the statute says, that it is specifically to be utilized for projects just like this, so.
What else is paid out of that account?
Not much of anything, eleven seventy. There's a lot that comes from PSAP, a lot that comes from eleven forty.
I'm just concerned that, like, you know, we've talked about that the other thing, we're allocating.
That's right.
The same funds for several different.
Well, we actually reimbursed County General two point one million dollars for the jailer salaries out of that each year. And then we also, the sheriff, part of the sheriff's budget comes out of there, which this year was six hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred.
So those are still numbers that still need to come out of that five million?
No, they already have. So we bring in a little over two point five million dollars each year. And then, like I said, we budget out, so we're cutting into some of the cash as it is by what we're budgeting out of that. Current cash balance today was five thousand seven hundred, no, five million.
I was like, what?
Seven hundred and eight thousand fifty-six dollars. And the sheriff department still has remaining appropriations in the amount of nine thousand. So if they would use all their appropriations out of there, the ending cash balance issue would be five million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
One of the things that we're seeking guidance from our commissioners and others about this project was, one of the things that we went to Motorola and said was, look, our cash balances can't take hits of six million dollars at a time. We can't afford it. And they, then, we worked with them and the council commissioners, and we said, what can you do for us? And their offer was, three years, no interest, locked. No interest factor, no inflation factor, no nothing. So that way, the county's appropriation each year would be roughly one point eight, first year, two, something like that.
And I will say, the reason we chose eleven seventy, Brenda, was because there's still a conversation regarding community corrections and a facility, and those bond payments would come from eleven fourteen fund or twelve thirty-three, which also have excess funds in them. But they could certainly, Michael, maybe be utilized if you, if that's what you want to do. But this fund was a safe fund that has the money in it that traditionally brings the revenue.
I think, as Commissioner Schweitzer indicated, you know, a lot of the lit funds have common themes running throughout them, but I think this project, given its significant tie to public safety, would qualify in any of them.
And when I submitted the request, it's actually substantially less than what the request is now, so.
Yeah, originally, the proposal included a relocation of the current tower site at Third and Cherry. Commissioners opted to remove that from the project. Absolutely has no impact on public safety, we're fine with that. That reduced the cost by approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. So that actually, if the council chose to fund this agreement, I believe the auditor would probably have their exact number, but I think it's closer to one point eight million next year. And I'll defer to our experts on the left when it comes to those numbers.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Does that reduce year two and three as well?
It does. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, it does. They reduced all three, and I'll defer to the auditor to give you the exact numbers. I have them, but I'll make sure that I let them speak for their bailiwick.
I had just did the calculations, and if you would fund, I think it was brought down to one million, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred? Okay, so if you would fund it out of there, out of Lit Public Safety, the ending cash balance would be three million, eight hundred eleven dollars, five forty-two, ninety-two.
Judy, say that again. I lost a little bit what you were telling us.
The first installment payment, they brought it down to one million, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred. Okay, so then if you would subtract that from what our active cash balance is at the end of twenty-five, it's going to be three million, eight, eleven, five forty-two, ninety-two. That would be the cash balance if you funded it out of there.
President Thompson, and then I think our secondary payments look like about two point six and roughly two point nine for the balance at the end of twenty twenty-eight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Ellis?
I've got a slew of questions. I apologize in advance. My first one's going to be for Judy. Judy, you mentioned that we have, we bring in approximately two point five million into that account per year. How much do we have recurring expenses that go out each year on that?
More than two point five.
So if you take two point one million of that two point five and give it to the general fund to pay for jailer salaries. So you're supplementing the general fund with the vast majority of that. that 2.5. And then sheriff's budget, about 600, 650,000.
So, each...
You spend more money than you took in.
Okay. So, if we are, and you're saying that is going to continue to happen, that we are going to continue to spend more money than we bring in?
It is the council's prerogative, but that's a decision that was made to relieve stress from the general fund with the local income tax.
Okay. So, before I get to all my questions relative to this, I think we first need to understand if we're spending more than we're bringing in, do we have, is the money going to be there to do this project should we see it fit to move forward?
Yeah. Just because this request is coming from 1170 today doesn't mean it has to come from 1170 next year.
Okay.
It can come from three of the, any other public safety funds, as Michael and I alluded to, that have an excess of funds.
Copy.
So, I was just being respectful of Vicki and I know she wants to continue the conversation with community corrections. You guys have also passed an ordinance to withhold funds. Councilman Thompson, Brenda, you guys were on the council when you did that, that we're currently building a large cash balance because of that ordinance that's in place.
Okay.
So, the fund, the, right now, it's coming from 1170. What the commissioners are looking for right now is if you guys approve this, I need to make sure, we have to sign a contract that the council's going to fund this in year two and three as well. And this doesn't become, you know, something in July of next year that, oh, we decided we're not going to do this because we're obligated to Motorola to sign this contract.
Sure. All right. Question, all right, so now I'll move on from that. Before that, I'll say thank you to Jeff, Scott Dalton, Derek, Scott, Chris, huh?
Mike Stewart.
Mike Stewart.
Mike Stewart, well, the committee.
Oh, no, I'm talking about people I spoke to. So, but thank you to him as well, sure. Chris Doty. And so, I guess my, my next, I think there's not, I'm guessing there's probably not a one of us that doesn't want to move forward and help public safety, not only for the sake of the people who are working there, but also for our own safety because it helps us as, as citizens. The, in an ideal world, we'd have more time to make this decision. So, I'm going to ask a few questions that may help us get to this point tonight. In a conversation with Chris and also when he just stood up here, he mentioned something about why would we not want to own our own towers and control who is on them? And, and, and I may ask him to come up and help, maybe I'm not articulating that correctly, but I would love to hear your response to that so that we have a better understanding of why this is the proper direction to go and/or have you considered what he's saying?
Sure. And, and I will obviously defer in case I misunderstood.
Okay.
If I understand Mr. Doty correctly, what he has presented is the city of Terre Haute currently owns a private radio system that manages their public works and I'll defer to those who know. The discussion would be, should we move public safety to a private radio system that we can control, okay? And that conversation was had, and I will defer to Mr. Anderson, who is an elder statesman here tonight, that that conversation was had 20 years ago or more. And, and where I'm going with that, and I, elder state, elder statesman. And when Hoosier Safety rolled out, hold me to the numbers, but late 2000s, early 2000s, sorry, late 1999, we were exactly in the same point that you just brought. City of Terre Haute had its own radio system, sheriff's office had its own, every county fire department had their own, and we just all did whatever at all of our cost. The state of Indiana came along and said, oh, by the way, we're going to build your radio system for free because all of you go into the li, the license bureau every day is going to pay for it. You can come onto our system at no cost. The only thing you have to buy is your own portables and mobile radios and you're good to go. That to us was a no-brainer. And today, we are part of that system of 190-some towers. And every time we move about our county today, we take advantage of that. And I'll give you a couple of good examples. The, the Ipsic Tower, if you will, in Brazil, 52% of its communications are from Vigo County The Bridgestone Tower is, in Park County, is 42% Vigo County communications. And I could go to the one in Sullivan and the one in Clinton, they're all 40 to 50%. So, what that means to us, folks, is we have to be part of the big system. We move too much, we travel too much, we cannot, and I respect his opinion, but we cannot be on our own. We can't be. And if we were to go backwards, now, all of a sudden, we're going from 194-site system to three. And the minute I get away from those, I'm on my own. I can't communicate with anybody but my own people. And if I get beyond that site, I'm done. And, and we just, we can't do that. And, and so, that's why. Plus, if you want to build your own sites, the ongoing cost and the responsibility is burdened by the county. If we stay with Ipsic, they manage many things for us. Yes, we do have some expense, you obviously see that. But the long term is, it is a state expense. And I also don't believe, as a taxpayer, why should we pay for something that the state's already paying for? Since our, our state government is funding this through license plate fees, why are we duplicating that? So, hopefully that would answer your question.
What, if any, are the recurring upkeep fees for these towers? Should Motorola build them? Is there an annual fee of any sort?
So, I will defer in case my answer is incorrect. But you will see in the proposal, you see warranty year, spring 2028 through 2029, that annual expense is our expense and that's what. Now, that is our, that is our equipment or that's our cost. So, that's the warranty to maintain that equipment. But if the state makes any additional changes, that is not a, that is not a cost of Vigo County. Is that correct, Mr. Thurla?
All right. If, uh, what would the, and again, I apologize, I'm not educated in this area, it's not our build of expertise.
Please do. Please do. That's why I'm here.
Uh, and you seem to be able to handle just about any question I've thrown at you so far.
No, sir.
What would prevent us from putting up these three towers that we own instead and that we control, but also still have the ability for emergency backup to, my understanding is you could turn the knob and be back on the channel that has the whole state again? What would the argument against, be against that so that we do have, now you truly have a redundancy? Is there an argument against that? And, and again, I would love for Mr. Doty to come up here and you said some things to me the other day and I'm not sure that I'm articulating them correctly. And I, and I'm not saying that I agree with him, I'm just trying to understand
No, sir.
So that we have a better way.
Sure.
So, we better know how to vote.
Sure. Let me, let me give you just a perspective here of the concept of setting a private radio system and setting the state system next to it, okay? Remember when I said that Vigo County and, and everybody, we constantly move from site to site? Even if that radio system sits side by side, there's, yes, I might be able to make some kind of change in my radio, okay? That would allow me to talk on both systems. But you're talking about those two systems, then, so you're touching every radio in the county? And then, once again, now we're still maintaining our system. And then, when I move out of the county, then I lose that connectivity unless I have to then switch back to another radio system. But the minute I switch to the radio system, then I've lost the people that I just switched off of. And so, currently, it never matters. It doesn't matter where we are.
So, you're saying they cannot communicate together?
They cannot communicate together. That is correct.
Mr. Doty, do you agree with that?
If the state would let us do it, you could make it, the call subsystem interface and you...
Chris, would you talk on the microphone?
All right. Yeah, there's a way to do it if the state would allow, you know. I, I want to start with, just step back a second. I did a Google search this morning, just a Google search quick. How many municipalities in the state of Indiana have their own trunk two-way radio system? All right, and I came up with 12. You know, you start with, like, start north, you got Hammond, you got South Bend, you got Fort Wayne, you got Indianapolis, you got Evansville, Lafayette. So, there are most cities, I can't say all, but most cities the size of Terre Haute have their own radio system they control. For the very problem he's stating is that we don't, he, he doesn't have capacity. Well, as long as you got all these radios in the whole state of Indiana have access to all these towers, you're going to have problems. I mean, capacity problems. So, you know, we can investigate why those 12 other county, city, how, like Kokomo, Hamilton County, there's a big list, just Google it. You know, you can come up with figuring out why, how many people are doing this and why. And a lot of them are Motorola Motorola, right? They use the state system, they pay for it, they have it in their radios, your radio can have multiple systems. You know, you could have, you know, more than one. So, and there's ways to hook the two systems together, so it kind of appears as one system in your radio, so you don't have all these, these troubles. There's, there's shortcomings of the state system. When you get far away from here, Vigo County talk groups are only good one county deep. So, if you take your county radio here, the way it's, it's set up, they have, the whole state of Indiana has a capacity problem, right? They don't have all the channels everywhere for everyone to use. So, my radio in Vigo County with my Vigo County Sheriff channel, I can go to Park, I can go one channel, one tower deep. And then after that, that, that group is no more, you'll get bought if you go to Indianapolis. They have a segregated section that you have to go to, talk groups that are tied together, statewide groups that you can get on and you can talk all across the state. But there's a group of them and there's, you almost have to set up a time thing, like, 8 o'clock, I want to call you, you know? So, the other guy has to go to that, that group and you have to meet. So, anyway, there's a lot of different things to talk about. Uh, you know, the capacity problem and, I was getting way out in the weeds here. One of the things that, now, these people will probably straighten me out, okay? Because there's some things that could happen here that I'm going to, you know, I think I know. And I'm not going to say that I'm all-knowing, right? There's towers that they're wanting to build with the Motorola have, are they called TDMA, right? Time, Division, Multiple Access. So, they're going to take these eight channels, I think they got, or six, they got six channels in the, from what the documentation I saw, that will, one of the six is a data channel. Then you have five and then Time, Division, Multiple Access will allow you to split those channels in two, so you can have 10 talk paths, one data channel. But as soon as somebody comes along in that system and doesn't have that Phase 2 in their radio, it's no longer, it can't do that. So, that channel ends up being just a regular old Phase 1 channel. So, until you control who has access to your system, whereas only the radios that are allowed to be on this are Phase 2 compliant, then you can keep your talk groups and your talk paths sorted, right? But I know the state of Indiana, now, if you want to buy a new radio and you want to get an ID, because you got to, if you buy a radio and you want to add to your fleet, you got to, you got to fill out a form, send it to Indianapolis and say, hey, I have, this is my serial number, my radio, I would like to have an ID for it. And they'll say, well, okay. And a lot of times, it's no problem, but I work with different fire departments that may have a bunch of junk radios or whatever. And then Ipsic will say, hey, how about all these IDs that no one in your organization's transmitted on in a year? And why don't you use one of those? But anyway, what I'm getting at is you got to beg, what, if you don't control it, you have to ask permission all the time, right? So, I hope I didn't confuse you more and worse.
You did for sure. Thank you.
All right. But, you know, it's a compromise if, and, and I, you know, like I said, Google it, there's a lot of different counties there that, that have made, you're paying for Project Who's Your Safety, keep it. I'm not activating, you give anything up. I'm adding for adding more. That's the only thing I'm, you know, add more to it. You can have, Project Who's Your Safety has trouble. It goes down, you know? The biggest, the weakest point of that big system is all the data connections. Somebody out there digging a ditch, next thing you know, you cut a, you cut a major line and then you got a problem. But if you had your own or whatever, you have redundancy.
Thank you. All right. Jeff, follow up with you real quick before you speak.
Just a second.
I assume the end goal for everyone here that are first responders is the best communication possible. Fair assumption?
Sure.
Okay. And, and so, my question to you would be, I assume, number one, you spoke the language that he was speaking and you understood what he was saying?
I, I understand what he said. I have a difference in of opinion, but yes, I do.
And that's good. We want, we would love, at least I could speak for myself, I would love to hear that difference of opinion. Um, my main, my main question was, have we looked into, have we spoken to people who may not share your exact view, but might shed some light on, hey, this may be a better avenue to have better communications and potentially add a lower expense to the county?
So, the answer is yes. I can assure you, and, and I'm not saying that that makes it right, but this conversation was had over 20 years ago. And we beat this up. Trust me, we beat it up.
Sure.
And this was deemed to be the best solution for everyone involved. And I will only speak for me and my experience. It was the best decision public safety has ever made in this county, period, the end. The system has performed exactly the way it's supposed to and Mr. Doty is correct. Does it have days? Sure, it does. If a, if a, if a line gets cut to a site, well, guess what? The state just moved all their sites to redundancy with microwave and these could potentially be that. If the 800 system goes down today, the sheriff's office has VHF radios that we use and many agencies around here have redundancy or have other talk communications paths. So, when we talk about spending a lot of money for redundancy, that, that is, that does not make any sense because we, as an agency, have our own redundancies and our abilities. And the last thing is, and I want to, I want to try to, to drive this point home because it's, I know it can be difficult to understand and, and President Thompson, please excuse me for dragging you into this, but if Mr. Thompson initiates a traffic pursuit tonight from Third and Cherry and he goes east on US 40, under our current system, his radio system will work just fine until, yes, he might be on the other side of the last tower in our zone. Currently, that takes him about to Marion County. But Mr. Thompson has a city police car behind him and another sheriff's deputy behind him and a state trooper coming out of Indianapolis to help him, all of which talk to him on his radio. If we move to a private system, that all goes away because then Mr. Thompson is asked to do, make a tough decision here. When I lose my state system, I move to what? Or if I move, if I'm on my private radio system and I switch to the state system, the cars behind me, they can't hear me now because I'm on another system. And when I have DNR, I have all these resources coming to help President Thompson, we don't have time to have that conversation about capacities and all those questions about private and all those things. And we experience it every day. And so, there, there are some serious operational issues that come with abandoning where we are today. And I understand it might be at less cost and, and you can have a variety of different conversations. But at the end of the day, I go back to my statement earlier about, we've been here for 20 years, it works flawlessly, it meets all of the agency's needs with the exception of coverage and capacity which we... of coverage and capacity which we as a county have outgrown. It's not the state system's problem, it's the county's growing. So we have to step up and fix it. So I, I can't impress upon you enough that the word interoperability is it. And, and, and the thought of moving away from anything or having it as a secondary, you know, if, if you want to spend millions of dollars for something in a backup scenario, but just think about this, our backup scenario too, right now is, I'll give you a good example. God forbid, that gentleman's car would have exploded the other day and took that tower out at the jail. This county been down to one tower to service all of our public safety. If this project is funded and completed, we have five. Let him take that tower out, we have four more. And then, oh, by the way, because we're on the state radio system, the state of Indiana brings a tower to us from Indianapolis and puts it online.
Just a couple more short questions.
Please do.
Are there any other questions by council?
I apologize.
Councilman Gentry.
I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. So, some people know this, some people don't, but I work for the State Treasurer, I'm Director of External Affairs for the State Treasurer. State Treasurer happens to be the person in charge of Indiana's 911 statewide network. So I have asked a, several questions to the Executive Director of the Statewide 911 Board, and you earlier mentioned that the state would come in and, and I want to make sure, would service. I have an email that was sent to me this morning that says, "If the county adds sites, they will enter into a maintenance contract with Motorola. Our technicians will still do regular checks at the sites though, and the regular two-year upgrades slash updates that are part of the system agreement, which is under the old safety network, are done without charge to the county. If we would get augmentation to our dedicated fund from the Bureau of Motor Vehicles," so I'm assuming that their funds are coming from the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, "that might change, but currently our dedicated funds are maxed out. So there is no additional money to maintain the new additional towers."
Correct. And that is built into this warranty system for the next through 2028, that's our responsibility. But as you pointed out, we also receive the benefits of the state to maintain the software and those kind of things that, that are, are part of, that, because we are a part of the state system.
Mr. Dalton, when you and I spoke on the phone, you relayed a story to me whereby you were in southern Vigo County at a wreck, and you switched over to cellular coverage to complete calls, to dispatch, is that correct?
Yes, sir, really, it's an automatic switch. It's, though there's milliseconds of the switch, I don't have to physically do anything.
Okay, it automatically picks it up?
Yep.
That is under the Motorola Smart Connect system?
Yes, sir.
And that is available on the APX 6000 model. I believe it's also available on other models. And as I did some research within Vigo County and understanding the type of radios that we currently have, there are several pieces of our network currently in Vigo County that do not have the equipment, the actual handhelds, the radios in their vehicles and trucks, to be able to actually upgrade to Smart Connect. I also understand that under, and this may be negotiable, but under contract, we could take what I estimate, and I strongly say estimate, the thousand radios that are currently in operation if we would pay to upgrade some of the fire departments and possibly even some of the local law enforcement. I think the Vigo County sheriffs probably need upgrades to their radios as well. But if we did that, it would be somewhere around $7.60 a year for the radios to actually, per radio, to, it's $7.60 a month per, under the contract. But would basically take everyone's radio and allow them to connect using the already cellular system within the county. Is that your understanding as well? I mean, again, I'm not an expert on this, I'm just talking to experts and trying to get more information on this, so I just wanted to know what you know about that.
Yeah, you're well-founded on that, and that's something I was bringing, going to bring up to Councilman Ellis whenever we talk about why it's important to stick with the state system, because the state system allows what you're speaking of, and some of the agencies use the Smart Connect. And the Smart Connect, I know there's been a lot of talk, and I saw when Mr. Doty said P-25 and Phase Two, everybody's eyes started going. P-25 is the public safety standard, and a long time ago, when I didn't have gray hair, they were because...
We had hair.
They were doing narrowbanding. There was a Phase One and a Phase Two. So Phase One, all of our radios that I know of that's in Vigo County are Phase One compatible. And those radios are becoming end of life. And those radios are also what he speaks about, which limits our double capacity. Now, when we go with Phase Two and with the state system, we do have the ability to have a subscription, which is called Smart Connect. So if our radio signal gets at a programmed setting, it will roll to LTE or cellular. And with that...
But a clarification, my point, I want to make sure that we don't labor this because we may have more questions and there may be other council members that have questions, and I want to be very precise.
Yes, sir.
If we have, and this is, this is my research.
Yep.
I've been known to be the guy calling and talking to people, so I, believe me, I've been doing that. We have areas of this county, various different departments that are using end-of-life equipment, if that's what you want to call it. Some people would call it other things, but the point would be, is if we would make an investment as the county into Motorola equipment, not leaving Motorola, but getting the best equipment that's available, modern technology, and we would add Smart Connect to those radios, even though there would be an ongoing cost, the point would be is we would have access to every cell tower using LTE in a case of a bad situation. Now, I'm not stupid, I also know there's areas in this county that you can't make a phone call.
Yes.
But I also know, as I travel the state and visit with PSAPS and talk to county commissioners and councilmen around the state, that every county does have dead spots. I mean, eliminating all dead spots is, may not even be a possibility.
Yeah, and that's 100% accurate, and that's where Smart Connect comes in. The radio system that is built out, Smart Connect fills those gaps as a redundancy to the, if you will, coverage.
So, one, I would, I would say that if this council is poised to throw money at these towers, it would be my opinion and my research, and those people that I believe have no horse in this race, have stated that it may be a very wise decision to add into this a very small amount, considering the large amount that this costs, an upgrade to the equipment. Now, what I understand is Terre Haute City, Riley, I'm trying to think, Honey Creek, these locations already have the newer equipment, and when I'm talking equipment, it's the radios.
Yes, the 6000s are newer.
Right. So, the plus to this would be that in a worst-case scenario, a fiber optic cut, and even though we're adding this many towers, if you had access to every cell tower in a county, or you bounced over into President Thompson's doing this fictitious traffic stop and he's over in Clay County chasing somebody, he would still have the ability to connect. So there wouldn't, it would not be a scenario where he would be totally unavailable to connect. I'm guessing I'm wrong on that, on that statement?
I verified it because I want to double-check. The scenario with that is this, a radio can only affiliate with one carrier. So therefore, if I put a Verizon Smart Connect SIM card in my radio, and I get out of the Verizon coverage area and I can, I can give you this debate because, I hope I don't have very many deputies here because they're going to kill me. We used to have a situation where we were Verizon carriers, and we moved to AT&amp;T, and all of a sudden, everybody who lived in the south end of the county hated everybody's guts because they lost all their cell carriers, and then it went the other way. So the situation would be, I appreciate the idea, and yes, if I were operating in an environment where I had one cell carrier, I was in one town and that was my carrier, it makes sense. As a deputy sheriff, I can tell you that if I put a Verizon cell card in that portable, the minute I get north of 41 and 63 and travel north, my radio is useless.
Right, and I say...
And, and I, and I don't mean that disrespectfully. Trust me, it's always better. I really respect that, Councilman Gentry, that the ability to have that would be fantastic. And I would offer you just a couple of ideas for that, that concept. Good or bad, take it for what it's worth. We have two other consideration, or one, two other considerations in this proposal for your consideration. Motorola is offering a 40% discount on you subscriber radios. So if an agency needs to upgrade, and I know our commissioners have heard that many times, we are going to give them some financial relief if they choose to do that. Now, keep in mind, if they choose to purchase Kenwood radios from Mr. Doty, wonderful, that's not us. But what I might offer you is, if we, we have about a year and a half worth of that offer, if this agreement is signed, that we could allow those agencies to do that at their convenience and leisure and at their, and they have to make decisions about not only that, but can they afford the reoccurring? So, so maybe we see where we are at the end of that opportunity? And then the second thing I would offer about that is, our agency, and I, I think I can speak with the sheriff, I hope if I, if I'm looking for a job tomorrow, please remember this, Motorola has made an offer to us as well. Our agency is currently APX users, and we do want to move. The majority of the county is using what they call an XTS model, which is reaching end of life. They have suggested to us and are willing to work with us that if we as an agency could afford to replace our radios, we can hand our radios down to those agencies that can't afford it.
Yeah.
So that is, that is a consideration, just for what it's worth.
Yeah, and getting information from the Vigo County Sheriff's Office, the radios that you currently have are not all Smart Connect capable at this point. The models are not compatible with Smart Connect.
Yes, Lieutenant.
The other thing I would say, there is, again, sadly, some of this can never get worked out outside of these types of meetings, and I hate to drag this out, but I, I think it's, it's a misnomer to believe that what you connect to, whether you choose T-Mobile or T-Phone or, there's, there's various different cell coverages that actually will take any tower. So I don't know that we're still in that good old days of only being, I have an AT&amp;T or only able to have Verizon. And I don't think that what I'm proposing, sir, is a replacement. What I am trying to show is there are ways that we can create a system that is redundant and has backups, it's proven in other counties. I'm using information that's being fed to me at the highest levels of state government associated with 911, what's working, what's not working, what equipment's working. I'm 100% on the idea of Motorola. I just don't know whether we want to, all at once, decide to do towers when there's a lot of technology out there, and people are saying that maybe we could create the environment. Another thing that was brought up, and again, President, bear with me for one second, I know it's getting long, and I'm, I'm actually on the, on the tab with my security guy here. So I want to say that another thing that was brought up that's being used around the state is whereby we strategically place repeaters that cost about $15,000 to $20,000 per truck or unit, and those vehicles become mobile towers in the sense that they're around the county. These are ideas that are popping up as I start to do the inquiries. Not saying that they're better. Matter of fact, I told Mr. Dalton, I felt like the tower plan is very presentable, is I, I'm not opposed to it, I just think that when you're doing dollar for dollar and we're looking at a fiscal situation, not a, "I want this, but what can we fiscally actually fund?" My last question, Mr. President, is to Commissioner Schweitzer. It is my understanding that the LITS that we're playing with right now have a strong potential to be either modified or eliminated as a result of SB1. And we never know what's the legislature going to do and so forth. One of my concerns is, is when we start spending money like this out of accounts, and yes, we've done well, we've saved it up. What I'm seeing around the state with other PSAPS and other counties whereby county commissioners and county councilmen are presenting to the state 911 Board and to the treasurer, talking about funding shortfalls, they don't have the resources to keep their operations open because they have not put money back. I get extremely worried that the money that we have may not continue to be something that we can use local income tax to feed, and thus the source is cut off, and we get the towers, but then we can't run the operation because we can't afford increases in payroll to 911 operators, or we have other costs that come into play, new equipment needed, these types of things. So, am I correct that these LITS are subject to either termination or revision? I think it's after, it'd be 2026 budget for 2027?
Yeah, '27 for '28.
'27 or '28, okay.
So I had the opportunity to, Councilman Gentry, travel across the state and talk to a lot of county commissioners. What I will say was the Vigo County jail and the federal lawsuit was a blessing and a curse. It kind of forced this council to implement a local income tax to fund a new county jail, plus pass a PSAP tax, plus additional taxes as well. Michael was integrally involved in all of those conversations. What this council will decide in late, or in their budget session in '27 is what amount of up to 1.2% will they pass for local income tax? And in addition, can also implement a 0.4% local income tax for public safety. That's no longer shared with the city of Terre Haute or any other agencies in this community. Those towns will have to pass their own tax that you will still have to pass as a county council because that's what SB1 says. So all of those income tax options will come before you with support from the town boards to do the necessary things they might need for their communities. Now, I'm going to say this with extreme caution. Because our local income tax being 2% as it is now, and Judy, you can punch me or Michael as well, because we share our local income tax with the other municipalities, we don't get to keep all that 2%. But when and if you implement a maximum 1.2%, you could have the potential to bring in actually more revenue than what we do now.
Because we won't be sharing it?
Because you won't be sharing it any longer. This tax that we have in place now, the revenue that we receive is between 20 to 26 million dollars a year between all of these local income tax buckets, which is when, which I don't think SBOA enjoys that because we're sitting on some money. So we'll have to have that conversation '26 and '27, but the revenue will still be there.
So...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if we have debt, we still have to, we have to meet our, our debt, pass a local income tax to pay our bills, which is just, right now, outstanding as the jail.
I've been provided a different overview that we may have to, maybe we are cutting, but maybe we get to keep more of it? I don't know if that's the balance, is that the balance?
In my opinion... In my opinion, I would say, and I know Baker-Tully is a bad word around here for some people, but I get along with Jason Somer really well, who I've worked with for five years, and I trust that guy through and through, and his assessment is, at 1.2% after 2027, we have the potential to make as much, if not more, than what we're bringing in now, that we don't have to share.
That's the best news we've had all night. Mr. President, I have no further questions, sir.
I have one more, if that's okay.
Councilman Ellis?
My only question would be for the commissioners, are you guys willing to go on record and tell us where you stand on this?
Yeah, I mean, I support public safety.
Are you, I know you support, I have no doubt that you both support public, we all do.
Yeah, but my fear is, Steve, you're going to rely on what we say for your vote, and...
To some degree, that is, because we haven't had a chance to research this shit.
I've been a part of this committee for two years now. I did my damnedest to bring it back together. Vicky's on the board, because it fell apart for a long time. This is something they have wanted for several years. There has been no, there's been nothing, ever any time, that you guys have supported financially, that Michael or Mark or myself have not agreed to sign a contract to.
Okay, and I apologize, I'm going to put you on the spot. If you were sitting up here right now, would you vote in favor of this, or would you vote against it?
I wouldn't.
Mark?
Can I answer more?
Yes, absolutely, please do. I'd love to hear more.
Yeah, so, I'm here because of first responders, I'm still alive because of first responders, sure. So, at the end of the day, I want to do all we can to make sure that they have, they're safe, and they keep us safe. I think my message throughout this process has been pretty clear that I support this plan. I think it's a great plan to have all these other towers. I'm not a communications guy, I'm not an IT guy, so I rely on them to tell me, this is what we need, and they want Motorola. I'm all about that. The only thing that I have said is that I felt that Motorola was making us make this decision by the 19th of December, and I felt that we needed a little more time to look and see if there was any other options. That's really the only thing that I have an issue with. But yes, I will sign the contract if you pass it, and if I was in your place, yes, I would vote for it.
Is there a representative from Motorola here, is that correct?
Yes.
Would you be willing to extend this to give us a little more time to review it? The discount, what is the discount that we stand to lose?
Oh, first of all, good evening.
My apologies, thank you.
Mr. President, the council, there was multiple discounts. There was a loyalty discount, there is the State of Indiana QPA discount, all of that will remain into 2026. When this project was started, my team's been working on it for quite some time, but it really heated up around April, May, June, so finance provided me additional discounts that go above my head that I cannot extend into 2026. I think it was closer to $500,000 to $600,000 total. This is 2025 equipment pricing, 2025 labor pricing, all of that that we're doing. I do want to make a comment on the sites. Since 2014, when Ipsac renewed a second time with us to refresh the statewide network, there was a cap at how many IDs can be on the system. Since that cap was lifted, there's been 11 counties that have added a total of 43 sites that have done something similar to you. They use this system 24/7. They either had the option to buy or expand their existing system, or use what already is being paid for. They saw the benefits, they continue to do it. Today, there's 115,000 radios that are on the statewide system, Motorola, Kenwood, Harris, everything about. The only repeaters, as far as the ones that would be going in the sites that are available on the state contract, is Motorola. That's why the county's very interested in continuing this and going forward, because really what they're doing is taking a two-site, individual sites, turning it into a five-site system. They do have the neighboring five counties, as far as five sites available, so if you built your own, you're looking to replace a 10-site system. We've not added our own Motorola, county-wide or city-wide system since that cap's been listed, lifted. Fort Wayne, yes, they have their own system, they went trunking prior to anybody else. Indianapolis, Mary, same thing. Lake County, it was right at the time that there was a consolidation of PSAPS, they had to make a decision, and it was before the state had updated. Since then, everybody that I've worked with, and I've been working in Indiana for 10 years now, I'm the Territory Vice President for the Midwest, everybody that wants to stay with Motorola continues on the statewide radio system.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I would like to make a motion to approve this appropriation.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson.
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wager. I don't know if there's any more discussion at this point.
Question that I would have that remains is, what percentage of the use of the towers are state units? State police, Department of Transportation, and DNR, I think, are the three major users?
I can get that from, Ipsac manages all of the user base.
I can send an email and get that, that's who's got it.
Mike Watkins, the director, he can provide you all that information.
I've got an email from him.
Perfect.
And please do hold me to this, Councilman Gentry, but I do have some information from Ipsac, and I won't drag this out any longer. The last I checked, our towers right now, 85% of the usage is Vigo County, Vigo County units, so everyone is signed to public safety in Vigo County of those, of the capacity. So, we're using 85% of the current sites.
Mr. President, the only thing I would say in discussion is that if this passes, which it seems that it will, I strongly think that we need to take a look at, the contract actually allows us to purchase these radios, which are normally $6,000, at 40% off. I use a bid that went to IU Public Safety, I think, from Motorola, at bid amount of $6,000 within the last 60 days. I would like to see the county council, if we're going to make these changes, let's get the entire county on current technology, so that we can then explore the idea of moving everybody to Smart Connect, which would create massive redundancy at a very small footprint of price compared to this whole big project. So, as an add-on, something I'd like to bring up, possibly in early 2026, sir.
Thank you.
And speaking, as part of that, again, if this passes, and if I'm asked to be the project manager, depending upon Sheriff Fells allowing me to do such, I would absolutely love to work with you, Mr. Gentry, and let's put that together. I think it's absolutely outstanding.
Not to add any more time here, the, I don't know if this is possible, but you guys have created ordinances before withholding money. Since you guys are meeting again this year, could it be ordained that this fiscal body will pay the payment in '26 and '27? Are you willing to have that conversation, and maybe let Michael and us work together on something that commits the funding for the entire project?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm happy to do that.
The initial request came in at 2.1 million, that's what it was advertised at, so that's the ceiling here, but he got a lower figure after advertisement, so the appropriation document does have the 2.1, if you guys want to put that back down to the 1.8 that he says. That you guys just never...
Do I need to make the motion to be...
Restate the motion.
Yes, you would just need a motion to amend it, and then a motion to approve it.
Okay, then I make the motion to amend the amount to, down to the 1.8 from the 2.1. So, do I need to withdraw my other motion first?
No.
Brady, is it 1.8 on the dime, or...
I had 1.887,500, is that right?
1.8875?
Five, yes. All right, so the motion is to amend the motion to $1,887,500, correct?
Correct.
And it's a motion by Councilwoman Wilson, and a second by Councilwoman Wager. Roll call vote, please.
Randy Gentry?
Aye.
Nancy Alsop?
Aye.
Brenda Wilson?
Aye.
Steve Ellis?
Aye.
Vicky Wager?
Aye.
Brad Anderson?
Aye.
David Thompson?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Now, I make a motion to approve the 1.8875, I know. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, and a second by Councilwoman Wager. Roll call, please.
Randy Gentry?
Aye.
Nancy Alsop?
Aye.
Brenda Wilson?
Aye.
Steve Ellis?
Aye.
Vicky Wager?
Aye.
Brad Anderson?
Aye.
David Thompson?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Hey, I can remember, I can remember getting the ring tones, or the tones from Pfizer's when they used to call out the fire department.
You're absolutely right, sir, and some days, maybe we should have gone back to that, right? Thank you all very much, I really appreciate it. I know you've been here a long time. It was an honor, as an opportunity to represent these people behind me, and all those people that you have in your paperwork in front of you, to represent our first responders. They're the best in the business, folks, and just think about this, in just the last three weeks, they dealt with a 45-car pileup on our interstate in a snowstorm, they fought a large commercial fire in the south end of our city, and they responded to a man who wanted to inflict terrorism in our downtown. So, thank you for supporting them, they do a great job for us. Thank you, President Thompson.
Honorary resolutions, there are none. Resolutions relating to fiscal policies of the council, there are none. Appointments, none. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Brady, Brady?
Sign everything, guys.
Hey, Brady? Can you do, start?